Great, thank you. Good afternoon, everybody. My name is Jenna Stone. We are here for the District of Squamish Committee, the full meeting for March 22nd. As Acting Mayor this month, I'll be chairing this meeting. We welcome that we are meeting today on the Squamish Nation Traditional Territory. Counsel, I'll entertain a motion to adopt the agenda. Moved by Counselor Herford, seconded by Counselor French. Any opposed? Motion carries. We have a full agenda this afternoon, and we're starting with two delegations. One, the first from Wood Fiber, and the second from Fortis. They are here to provide updates on their project and provide the community with some transparency on where their projects are at and the upcoming work. And we will not be entertaining questions from the floor today. As I mentioned, we have a tight agenda, but the folks here that are presenting, as well as our staff, are easily accessible after the meeting, either by email, if folks from the community do have questions. We will start with Wood Fiber's presentation, and there's a slew of folks here from the company, but I'll pass it over to Christine Kennedy, who's the president, to introduce who she has with her today. Thank you. We'll just get you to actually-
To present, and thank you Acting Mayor, Mayor Elliott, and members of council for having us. I'm Christine Kennedy. I'm the president of Wood Fiber. And I'd like to introduce those that are here with me today. We have Selina Bozzi, who's the Vice President of Government and External Relations, Julia Diamond, who's a manager of government relations, and Laura Prosko, right there behind me, who is our community relations manager. So grateful to be here, good to have the opportunity to come and present in person after I joined Wood Fiber in November. And in the later stages of COVID, this is the first opportunity that we're really having to get out and meet with people face to face, so appreciate the opportunity to be here today. So I will do our very best to stick to the timeframe as we go through our quick presentation in order to allow for questions. So we'll touch briefly on the company's vision and commitments to the community and to, like, including the municipality, but like through the municipality to the citizens of the area and the region and our partnership with the Squamish Nation, provide some project updates and plans for our activities in 2022, information on our engagement plans with the council and with the community over the course of this year, and then provide some time for question, discussion and questions and answers. So what I would start with, and I know that all of you are very familiar with the project, but from our parent company and on through the organization, I would say that there is a really firm commitment to what we call like the five Cs or a requirement that projects have to be mutually beneficial, economically beneficial to the community that we are operating in, to the country. They have to be neutral for the climate, they have to benefit our customers, and only after when those criteria are met will it be beneficial to the company to proceed with a major project anywhere, Wood Fiber or other projects in our parent company's operation. This is a, as you know, significant investment that will provide for economic reconciliation, and we anticipate will provide real positive benefits for the community and the region while we do everything possible to mitigate disruption for the community, pressure on community services, and do everything we can to reduce emissions related to the project. This project is, as you know, compliant with the Clean BC Program for British Columbia and compliant with the Pan-Canadian Framework on Clean Growth and Climate Change. In terms of workforce and the community, as you know, we have IBA with the Squamish Nation, and we are working towards a final IBA with the Swahili Tooth Nation. And those provide employment opportunities, training and procurement opportunities for first nations. We're also committed to the prioritization of local hiring opportunities for employees from the Squamish Nation, employees from the local area, and then employees from further across the province of B.C. in Canada, including a significant commitment to equity and inclusion. You'll see that all of us here today are female, and although we certainly have plenty of men in senior roles in the company, our commitment to diversity, equity, and inclusion is very serious. Over the course of the construction phase, there will be 650 jobs approximately associated with the project, and then once operational, it will provide 100 stable jobs in the community during operations. I'm absolutely proud of being the first company in Canada to have an indigenous government as one of our environmental regulators. We are the second e-drive facility in North America, which is pretty significant, and we will be the lowest emissions facility in the world at the point of construction. So for an update on the project for this year, overall, across the operations of the company, we've got an approved budget of $500 million US for 2022. As you know, we signed our engineering procurement fabrication and construction contract back in November, and that work will proceed once final notice to proceed happens. We are currently advancing the IBA with the Squamish Nation. We've got, as I mentioned earlier, the development of a diversity, equity, and inclusion strategy underway and a comprehensive workforce plan, and are making progress on all of the management plans required by our environmental assessment certificates. And I know that you guys all know what those are, so I won't read them off from the slide. So the things that have been done so far in terms of significant cleanup of this former industrial site, $12 million spent on remediation so far, significant removal of prior industrial debris, including the creosote piles, deep sea warfin warehouse, and old stockpiled concrete that you see there on the slide. Major, major site remediation efforts have been underway. Pre-construction works this year, we anticipate spending of over $25 million on additional site remediation and refurbishment. More site remediation work, including the removal of large concrete slabs on the site from the like former Western operation, decommissioning of the rail line, landfill closure, and the replacing of the passenger dock so that it can provide safe access for employees and contractors in all weather conditions. Information sharing and engagement over the course of COVID, and certainly during the time that, like, that I've been in this position, we haven't had that many opportunities to get out and have these conversations. As I started off with, this is my first time meeting you in person, because we've only just really had those COVID restrictions lifted so that we could have like face-to-face engagement. We're in the process of developing pretty significant engagement plans that will include community-driven and stakeholder-driven opportunities to work through how we minimize the project's impact on the community and on community services while ensuring that the maximum flow-through of benefits for local, small, and medium-sized businesses happen. It's going to be important to balance both. We have had a significant community donations and sponsorship program, and we're in the process of renewing that to provide a near-term intake with the focus on providing long-term benefit to the community across a variety of sports and recreation and like other community services, and certainly intend to have meaningful, detailed, open discussion and engagement sessions around, around many of our plans going forward, workforce accommodations, definitely, management plans, supply chain development, and how we're going to benefit local businesses, including other topic areas. It would be our expectation that we would engage with council as well as having like public information sessions. So that's where we would leave our presentation for the interests of time and leave it open for questions from you.
Thank you for keeping it concise. I'll actually just ask you to turn your microphone off. Thank you. Counsel, questions? Go ahead, Counselor French, and Counselor Penningill.
Thanks, Chair. So dating back to 2016, there was a significant amount of talk about completing a tax agreement between the District of Squamish and Wood Fiber LNG. Five years later, an impact benefit agreement has existed since 2019 between Wood Fiber LNG and the Squamish Nation, still no tax agreement with the District of Squamish. So my question for you is, does Wood Fiber LNG have a date set for when it needs to have a District of Squamish tax agreement completed by?
We're certainly keen to advance those discussions at any time. I know we have an active proposal for a non-disclosure or confidentiality agreement with staff for consideration by council. Some of the things that we would look to provide in that discussion involve of necessity information that is confidential or proprietary to our major contractors and subcontractors. So in order to engage in those discussions in detail, it's necessary for us for portions of the information to have an NDA in place. We're keen to engage whenever that's possible to do so. Is there a date that we have to have a tax agreement in place by? As soon as possible, frankly, but until, this is a project that will have like a relatively long construction horizon, so definitely needs to be in place by 2027, although it is definitely my preference to have it much earlier and as soon as possible.
Thanks, Chair.
Counselor Penningill.
Yeah, thanks. A few things. You spoke about engagement. I know Condition 24 of your EA certificate says you have to engage with the public for the life of the project on implementation plans and so on. And so we're in year six since the certificate was granted, but there hasn't been any, that I'm aware of, any public consultation on any of the plans. And so I'm just wondering if you can speak to that and how that lines with the, the sort of engagement that you're thinking of or your sort of values around engagement?
Well, until this point, the project was in what I would call like a planning and development stage. So we're now, as you know, in the phase where pre-construction is going on this year, and construction would begin in 2023. So now is the time for all of that engagement and consultation to begin. It would not have made sense to have extensive consultations ahead of that detailed like preparation for pre-construction and construction to then begin. So consultation and engagement is forthcoming.
My other question for now is around, you mentioned, it caught my attention, that you wouldn't move forward unless you're carbon neutral, I think is what you said. That was one of your Cs. But as I've looked at the numbers, your project emissions would more than double our current local emissions, which we're trying to drive down by 45% by 2030 and 0% by 2050. The provincial Clean BC target is 2050, 0% net emissions. You know, I know it's often argued that, oh, well, it's an increase here, but over in Asia it'll displace coal and therefore it's a reduction, but you're also displacing renewables and conservation overseas. So it is just as much, could be just as much as a massive increase in new emissions there, because we could solve those problems with all the subsidies and so on with renewables and so on. So I'm wondering how you're calculating this, this carbon neutrality that makes it acceptable for you to move forward?
I don't believe that in my answer that I had said specifically carbon neutrality, although we do everything possible to reduce emissions and certainly have a goal of driving toward carbon neutrality. I believe that, you know, unlike all of us, believe in the opportunity and promise of renewables over time, but when you're talking about the use of alternatives or renewables in Asia or other international markets for transition fuels in the interim, renewables don't have the, built the storage capacity to provide firm baseload power. So I, there are significant number, I believe 60 or 80 coal-fired power generation plants in China being prepared to operate. And projects like this will offset the need for some of those. The opportunity to go fully to renewables is not available for many of the international markets, and I think that we would look to the current situation in the Ukraine and the conflict with Russia and Europe's scrambling to find energy alternatives for Russian gas as well, as a fairly significant indicator that immediate transition to renewables isn't practical. We see LNG as a transition fuel that helps the world in its pathway to greater reliance on renewables.
Any further questions, Counselor?
Well, I may agree to disagree there, because we're talking about a several-year project and we could be investing that money into renewables in the same timeframe. So I respectfully agree to disagree on that one, but I'll stand down for now and maybe come back with a comment or question. Thanks.
Counsel, any further questions? Mayor Elliott, and then Counselor Anderson.
Thanks for coming today. You mentioned in your presentation a final notice to proceed at some point, and I'm wondering if you have a sense of that timing, given that we still have all these plans and engagement to put in place?
I don't have a final notice to proceed date at this point. Of course, the community would be made aware of that in an embargoed news release in advance, but all of the engagement processes and that work, now that we are at a stage where the company is making such a significant investment over the course of this year, we're at a stage where that community engagement and public engagement gets going over the next couple of months. So the two aren't directly necessarily tied to each other. We hope for that final notice to proceed to happen relatively soon. And of course, we'll be in touch with your office with an embargoed news release when that's ready to go out.
Thank you. I wonder if you could also say a word about the amendments you have in at the Environmental Assessment Office? It's been quite a long time around the workforce housing amendment, and I'm just wondering where that's at in the process?
I'm not sure exactly where that's currently at with the EAO. There has been a submission go-forward. We know that we've got, again, like, community consultation to do on that. The submission into the EAO is not directly related to the engagement that we'll do with the community. So we would expect to have more discussion about that in the, in the near future. Sorry.
The other piece of infrastructure that I'm curious about is I know that Wood Fiber's been speaking to the province about access to the dock at Darryl Bay, and there was a study to understand whether it could be used versus building another dock at Darryl Bay. And I'm wondering if you have any comments on where those decisions are at?
That's still an active, in-progress decision point for the company. And yes, there's been engagement with the province, and there certainly will be engagement with the community. Darryl Bay is a prime spot for the opportunity to transport workforce, to bring them into that location and then transport them to the site while providing minimal footprint on the community in terms of traffic congestion and things needing to come right into the community of Squamish. I know that there are, that there's information to bring forward and discussion to be had with council on that as that plan further develops. So I look forward to coming back and having more engagement with you on that.
The other piece that we're struggling with as a community is actually the cost of living, and you talk about having 100 family-supporting jobs once the plant is up and running. And I wonder if you could speak a bit about what your strategy is around sort of starting wages, housing, and helping your employees manage that cost of living? We're finding that when you're trying to recruit people in, the cost of housing is now prohibitive. And so what is, what is W LNG's strategy around that workforce and how you'll keep them housed and keep up with our cost of living here?
It's a significant issue, Mayor. I know for all of the region, really, and major employers across like Vancouver and like Sea to Sky Corridor and out into the valley are struggling with exactly the same thing. How to manage that like high cost of inflation and the increasing cost of housing, particularly as a feature in that? The operations workforce, of course, is like eight years out in 2027. And so it's our hope that over that time period, of course, a major investment like ours will also prompt investment from the development community, I would anticipate, to bring more supply to the region. I can't speak specifically yet to starting wages, because that's in progress and to be determined within the company, but these are like high-value technical jobs that will certainly earn a healthy living wage and will, that wage will keep pace with the inflationary pressures in the community. So do we need to develop for the company more broadly and particularly for the operations workforce, housing plans? And that's one of the things that we would intend over the course of this year, not specifically that Wood Fiber LNG would drive the process of building more supply in a community like Squamish, but that we need to be aware that our workforce, both in Vancouver and in Squamish, are going to need housing and that there's that period of time over the course of construction for that housing to be developed.
And do you anticipate that the headquarters for Wood Fiber will remain in Vancouver? Or is the intention over time to headquarter in Squamish?
I think that there would be a combination of primary operations base in Squamish and then some administrative capacity in Vancouver just for the convenience and ease of access of dealing with other levels of government, the province, the representatives of the federal government offices that are based in Vancouver, and others.
Given sort of the weekly publishing of new studies and, and around maintaining the Paris Accord climate target of limiting warming to 1.5 degrees, how is Wood Fiber managing its risk around the potential that senior levels of government are going to continue to drive home the oil and gas sector to get to net zero? So what are the strategies you have to get closer to that, given that the pressure is now on all levels of government, from local to federal, to move towards that 2050 goal of net zero with greater urgency?
We're tremendously proud of, of the work that has already been done to get this project to like being the lowest emissions LNG facility. And we have ongoing, very active, keen engagement in how to further lower those emissions through like technology, through avoidance of carbon emissions, and potentially over time through capture. Because our project already fits within the Clean BC framework and because we are a leader in like emissions reduction already, and because we are like intended as like a low emissions transition fuel to reduce coal use in other parts of the world, we think that we're pretty like comfortably positioned at present with the federal and provincial frameworks, and as those policies change, we'll continue to be very responsive to them. We're aware of the like objective to meet net zero. I wouldn't say that we have a specific plan for that yet, but it's something that I'm very keen to develop and that we're committing to like moving forward with over the next several years.
Thank you. I have Counselor Anderson, then Counselor Herford. I'll put myself on the list and go back to Counselor Penningill, and then we'll try and wrap up.
Thank you. Ms. Kennedy, in the presentation, you have highlighted four management plans that are required as part of the, or will require environmental assessment certificates, and they were, as you listed them, community services and infrastructure, traffic management plan, marine transport plan, emergency response plan. You've also referred to the supply chain development for local business. My question is, will, you have mentioned the intent to have public information sessions. I wondered whether you would be having, for example, advertised sessions for each of these management plans? And why I ask is that it strikes me that the, there would, are probably conversations, perhaps collaborative brainstorming for each of these, that have not yet been prompted, and that such meetings organized by topic or by management plan might be quite useful to bring people, businesses, and organizations out for those conversations.
It's certainly our intention to like engage with the community and with stakeholders on a, you know, like detailed level, but I'll open that to Selina in terms of whether those would be individual by topic area or whether we would be able to combine some of them productively to make the best use of people's time while still having full engagement. Selina, would you want to add anything to that?
I think I would just add that, as many around this table know, that the community, the infrastructure management plan is our first priority, and we do anticipate at least two to three very robust sessions on that in the coming months. And then as we work with our regulatory team to look at those other ones, it will be determined what makes sense, what are the add-ons that we can do, maximize the use of people's time, I know being respectful of the stakeholder community, but certainly ensuring that we are holding events, whether they're virtual, public, to make sure that we're capturing that really wide net of all of the voices and opinions that need to be heard throughout the community. So we will get back to you on that specifically with scheduling and things, but it's a, it's a really good point for us to contemplate more closely.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Anderson. Counselor Herford?
Thank you, and thank you for coming to see us today. In your presentation, you mentioned a spend this year of sort of $500 million for the year. How much of that is physically on-site? And I'm trying to understand how much work is being done and thus how much workforce is there now? Because I understand there's actually the construction phase, which will take, I don't know what the budget number is, a substantial budget number and a workforce number that, you know, that will be, that will be public, but now, what impact? I'm trying to understand what impact is happening now or in the next 12 months on all those similar topics that maybe don't fall under, maybe pre-construction doesn't fall under the same basket as construction? So I'm trying to understand where that, where that sits. Could you speak to that, please?
To a limited degree, I can, but I would need to get back to you with like a specific breakdown, if that's what you're asking. The $500 million commitment for this year includes things like, like further work on like engineering and design that would happen through our EPC contractor as well as local services. So I know that the, like, that the $25 million that we've got in the presentation for pre-construction is certainly the costs associated with those specific activities, but I'd be pleased to get back to you with more information on that specific breakdown.
Thank you. Yeah, some, some clarity around that would be, would be great, and also some clarity for our community that the, that the project as a whole is considering that from the onset, because we have serious concerns in, across our community around affordability, and we don't really struggle across the community to, to support the folks that are here. So having an understanding of what's going to be asked of the community to provide these accommodations for whatever- for whatever portion of that is actually spent on wages or, or, and I suppose the other half of that is how many jobs is this providing? And where are we going to put these people that have these, have these jobs? So however you want to, whichever angle, it's the same, it's the same question to me is, is um, how many people are going to be here in the next 12 months as you spend that money on that site? And where are they going to go?
For sure, and that's a very valid question. I think that um, I would start by saying that um, as people come onto the site, that is the intention for our workforce accommodations or um, the flotel for which there's been some past discussion and that we would certainly intend um, robust consult, like consultation and engagement on going forward. In terms of like the number of people specifically in the short term, um, I will have to like get a forecast for that. What I would say is that um, most of them or like the, the number of additional people over the short term will be relatively finite. And when we get into um, large volumes of workers, that's what uh, work, workforce accommodation is intended for. And as I've mentioned, that is at site um, with the intention for direct transportation to the site. So that that's relatively um, contained from the community, offering the maximum opportunities for um, like supply and um, engagement with small and medium businesses, but without providing too much pressure on community services. I would note that um, the site, of course, as you guys know, doesn't receive direct services from the community. So um, it is the uh, community services for workers that are based in the community of Squamish, for which there are currently seven um, that, that the community provides to our workforce today. Those are important services. And as there's a larger workforce here over time, of course, those services are incrementally more important. But we intend to be very sensitive about our pressure on traffic, um, housing, other community services as we progress through this project.
Thank you. And I'm speaking specifically to the, all those, all those pieces are, are important. I'm speaking specifically to the housing piece, whether that's a direct employee or contractors of or to do work there of that, of that scale. I think we've have, we need to understand the, the workforce that's there. Support, I mean, today or planned in the very near, in the very near future positioning to be. And, and that's been a piece that's um, that kind of hasn't been accounted for in my, in my opinion. And to go from that pre-construction phase to the construction phase, we're starting to get a better picture of the construction phase. The pre-phase, and to me, these things, how do they quite mesh? There seems to be a bit of a gray area in there, and I really appreciate some clarity around that. We have tremendous forces on our um, demand on our, our housing market and the existing businesses of whatever scale are having a hard time um, retain, recruiting and retaining staff. So I think that even from, from the company's perspective uh, or your um, your contractor's perspective, I think it's, it needs to be front, front of mind. And, and it needs, and I would appreciate if it was clear with the community what, what's being done there with an eye to that. Because our, our vacancy rate is extremely low and, and uh, the rental rates are, are skyrocketing. So we need to be really uh, cognizant of the pressures that we're, that we're applying um, to that. So um, I always, I'll leave it, I'll leave it there for now, but I'm, I'm happy to, to have a reply as well.
No, absolutely. And I do understand that. You know, I mean, that's the case in Squamish, it's the case in Vancouver, it's the case in many communities across British Columbia that there's extreme pressure on rental rates and the availability of housing. Over the next several weeks, we're working on a um, a workforce plan that will get us to um, gradually better numbers in all of that detail as the timing and specifics of like the pieces of work come together and we're able to identify how many um, contractor employees may be associated with each particular phase of work. So I would expect to have more information on that in about a month. Like four to six weeks, I would say, and would be glad to discuss that then.
Thank you. Yeah, just the, the immediacy of the, of the spend in the next, you know, as we talked about this year. We're, we're just finished, we're into Q2 here, so the um, yeah, it just jumped, jumped out at me that I hadn't heard about that piece. So thank you for that.
Thank you, councillor Herford. Um, thank you for coming to present today. It's always helpful to hear what is ongoing on your end. I guess it's also a little bit of a challenge in terms of we've, it feels like we've been here before. There's different faces on that side of the table. It's nice to finally put faces to names. But we've heard from the company before that this work was going to go forward, that there was a final investment decision just months away. Um, and so it feels like we're at a bit of a, we've had a few false starts. And so I'm curious how, how it's different this time and what reassurance you have for our community that, that now is the time to put the effort in because we're actually going to go forward.
I would say there, and I think that, you know, I'm unlike, you're absolutely right in pointing it out. It's no surprise to any of us here that there has been an uneven path for the project since it was first advanced in 2014. And um, global events and COVID and other things have delayed the progress of getting to where we are today. But um, the commitment by the company for such a significant expenditure during 2022 is material. And I think that even ahead of um, final notice to proceed to our E P C contractor is indicative that like the company is going forward, that um, the project is taken very seriously. And to make that kind of an expenditure um, is indicative that like there's every intent to complete. It's just a matter of um, the exact timing of that final notice to the contractor.
Thank you for that. Um, another question I've had uh, in years previous in terms of, I appreciate the commitment to community consultation and engagement. One of the challenges is always um, the capacity for our community to engage in understanding when folks are able to engage and to, to what uh, degree. And so I'm curious um, if you can speak to how folks in the community can better understand where their opportunities to engage will be, on what timeline, and how that's coordinated with Fortis B C.
Um, I think that the opportunity to provide that information is something that will be coming up in the near term. We will uh, certainly advertise. We will make sure that it's widely known in the community. We'll be absolutely sure that stuff comes to council as well. Um, and through every possible communication forum, social media, advertising in the Squamish chief, through um, radio advertising and whatever other means, we will get the word out to the community that there's an opportunity to come forward and engage with us on particular topics. Um, I'll leave any answers related to Fortis to our colleagues that present next.
I don't want to put the entire burden on them because it's also about coordination with Wood Fiber. And I'm concerned I'd hear a similar response from Fortis. So is there coordination between Wood Fiber L N G and Fortis B C on con- community consultation?
Um, there's certainly engagement on timing between the two organizations.
Thank you. Uh, councillor, we are over time. I'll entertain any last questions brief? Thank you, councillor Peddingill.
Just on the, the thought of upcoming, there's some stuff with the E A O, so there'll be upcoming engagement. I, I think, you know, in the initial engagements, we were told these were separate projects, which kind of boggles the mind because they obviously can't be separated. But we never saw cumulative impacts and we never got to understand that as a community. It's a thing people have asked about. So with these new assessments coming forward uh, or amendments or whatever they are, will we see, will there, will they, can I ask or request that that cumulative impact between the Forest project and this for, project be included? So we can understand, because these don't happen independently, the impacts magnify. And so can that information be in there? And while I'm at it, um, one of the, we've seen information about economic benefits and trade-offs in some of these uh, application support packages. But the economics piece is always missing all the subsidies. And so you can't really, you know, sort of cherry pick some of the benefits, but you can't really make sense of it and understand the pros and cons. So will, will the uh, packages coming forward give a full picture of the economics? Like I understand the e-drive is effectively a massive hydro subsidy. So we're paying to lower your emissions because you get uh, electricity at the industrial rate. So things like that really help us understand sort of cost benefit of these things. So will that kind of information, the cumulative impacts and sort of full economic picture be in whatever uh, assessment documents that are coming forward?
Um, we're certainly willing to like take that under advisement and note it as something that you're interested in, in receiving. I can't speak to, to that specifically right now and um, particularly we are over time. So um, that's something that we'll come back on at a later date.
Thank you. I'm sorry, I'm going to have to cut off there. We are over time. Thank you for the presentation and we'll switch up to our next presenters uh, from Fortis B C. Thank you so much to Christine and your team for being here.
Thank you to all of you for um, having us today and we look forward to further discussions.
We'll take a five-minute recess as we uh, switch over and we'll come back at twelve, sorry, 1:45. Great. Welcome back to the committee of the whole for March 22nd. We are on item three two, Fortis B C Eagle Mountain Wood Fiber Gas Pipeline Update. We have Gord Schorberg at the Senior Manager Municipal and Community Relations from Fortis B C here with his team. I will pass it over to you to introduce your folks and uh, go ahead with the presentation.
Thank you very much, Mayor, Mayor-elect and council. We appreciate the opportunity to provide an update to the Eagle Mountain to Wood Fiber Gas Pipeline Project. Fortis B C recognizes that the E G P project goes through the traditional territories of the Squamish Nation, Tsleil-Waututh Nation, Coquitlam First Nation and Musqueam First Nation, and that we're working with all of these indigenous groups very closely. I wanted to introduce my Fortis colleagues who have joined me today. Hannah Anderson, who I work with closely on the community relations side and is becoming uh, uh, well-known to many folks in, 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 in Squamish here. And Elliot Moses, probably best known to many of you, local Squamish resident for how many years? Eighteen years. And uh, so together we're uh, pleased to help advance the community relations part of the E G P project. Today, what I want to do is provide a project overview as a reminder of what the E G P project is all about. I want to provide an update of our project planning, since it's been over a year since we were here last. I'll let you know where we are at with workforce accommodation planning, which will probably take the majority of my remarks, and our next steps leading into construction in 2023. The purpose of the E G P project is to construct a pipeline for the delivery of natural gas to the Wood Fiber L N G plant on the north shore of How Sound. And it's comprised of uh, several different elements, uh, some of which are in northern edge of Coquitlam. We won't bother going into detail with those today. But the map uh, in front of you shows about 47 kilometers of gas pipeline, much of it up in the Indian River Valley, winding its way down through Squamish along Finch and Industrial over to the B C rail site in the industrial park. And then it'll enter a nine-kilometer tunnel under the Squamish estuary and the Monmouth Ridge, right over to the Wood Fiber L N G plant. Oh, Wood Fiber L N G plant. And then on the Wood Fiber plant, the construction of a compressor station. So that's E G P. Some of the things that we've been doing recently, we held a community table uh, just over a month ago. And I'll explain more about the community table in a few moments. The contractors that were engaging uh, temporary workforce lodge uh, request for expression of interest. We have um, identified and met with three joint venture contractors. And I'll explain more about the lodge uh, at, where it is and what it will be comprised of in a few moments. The pipeline portion of the project, we've engaged Sararis Murphy as a joint venture to do the construction planning. And we hope to announce a construction contractor uh, later this spring or summer. On the tunnel side, we've recently announced Frontier Camper Michaels as a joint venture uh, contractor to construct the nine-kilometer tunnel. And we've begun working with them on developing planning. On the regulatory side, as was mentioned in the previous presentation, the Squamish Nation acts as a regulator for us, along with the Environmental Assessment Office on the environment side. They've approved what we call Amendment Application Number One, which includes the Squamish compressor station. It had been, uh, we'd been looking at uh, a, a site um, up by Valley Cliff, in behind Valley Cliff. And now it is planned for the Wood Fiber L N G site. Conditions management plans, there are several, two that have mentioned here. The C S I M P, the Community Services and Infrastructure Management Plan and a Traffic Control Management Plan are now at their 100% draft level. And there are two more amendments to our environmental assessment certificate that are being planned. One is for the workforce lodge site size, to go from two hectares to seven hectares. More on that in a few minutes. And the second amendment is for a small reroute of the pipeline in the Indian River Valley. This slide shows the route of the tunnel from the B C rail property in kind of the upper right-hand side in the industrial park over to the Wood Fiber L N G site on How Sound, which is in the lower left-hand side, that purple line. While it is not the lowest cost option, a tunnel will avoid any impact to the environmentally sensitive Squamish estuary. The tunnel construction contract was awarded to Frontier Camper Michaels, as I've mentioned. And uh, we've issued limited notice to proceed to them, which will last about a year. And that will include the procurement of long lead time equipment, such as the tunnel boring machines, which has already been done, uh, engineering and construction planning and permitting. Over the past few years, Fortis has identified several potential workforce accommodation sites within Squamish area and shared them with the public. These sites have now been discounted from further consideration because they are either no longer commercially available or do not meet our updated criteria. We've heard loud and clear from the District of Squamish and the general public that the community does not want non-local temporary construction workers staying in local housing. We've been guided by advice from the community table, which is a group that includes community agencies and organizations representing the security, health, social and economic fabric of Squamish. It also includes local and indigenous governments. We've also heard about concerns related to increased traffic on local roads and potential social impacts on the community. Also, we've heard from individuals, contractors and businesses who look forward to taking part in the economic benefits the E G P project may bring. While our planning around these matters continues, we're making some changes to our plans, which we want to share with you today. We believe these changes will eliminate pressure on local housing, address traffic congestion and alleviate other pressures on community resources. This is why we are now planning to house all non-local temporary construction workers in one full-service workforce accommodation lodge. The aerial photo shows the preferred lodge site located south of Quest University in those green polygons. The site meets all of our key criteria, which includes minimizing travel to pipeline construction areas, much of which will be south and east of Squamish in the Indian River Valley. It minimizes travel to tunnel construction areas and water access to Wood Fiber's property. The site is flat, previously logged and disturbed, and avoids wetlands and critical habitat. It minimizes visual noise and dust impacts on the local community, while also being reasonably accessible to town. Traditional land use and cultural considerations are being addressed with the Squamish Nation. I'll just add that uh, those two green polygons, the, the lower one, as of this morning, is discounted. So it's the northerly squarish one that we're looking at. And I'll show you some photos of those in just a moment. So it's the green one that's squarish that we're looking at here. Here's a closer aerial photo showing the two, the, the potential site. We're considering uh, the design of road access. the design of road access within the property is being modified as we speak to stay away from nearby district water wells. Here's a couple of photos showing the geography and recent logging activity on site. Here's a couple of photos taken along the Forest Service Road to give you an indication of the type of access route. Access to the site will be from Highway ninety-nine along the Mamquam Forest River Forest Service Road for about three point five kilometers. Then the Powerhouse Springs Road for a further two point five kilometers. We're aware of commercial and recreational use on the road and intend minimizing traffic by having construction workers use buses and vans to travel to construction areas. Further discussion with local recreational organizations to ensure safe co-use of the roads is going to occur in the coming months. These roads will require typical road maintenance during construction season to ensure safe use by all, including emergency responders if necessary. Road use and lodge occupancy will vary with the seasonal pipeline construction schedule, highest in the summer and lowest in the winter. Here's an example of what the workforce lodge may look like. In two thousand and sixteen, Fortis received its environmental assessment certificate for E G P, which contained approval for a two hectare workforce site. However, at that time, we had anticipated that some of the construction workers would occupy local housing and others reside in a modest-sized workforce accommodation facility. Now that we intend addressing community concerns by housing all non-local temporary construction workers within one workforce lodge site, and after consulting with technical experts, we realize that we need to increase the site of the the size of the approved site from two hectares to seven hectare. We're now in the process of preparing an environmental assessment amendment for this purpose, obtaining feedback and intend submitting it to the Environmental Assessment Office later this spring. We've also submitted a request to the district for a pre-application meeting in order to work towards receiving a temporary use permit. The lodge intends to be a full-service facility and is going to include medical personnel, supplies and equipment that will be available to respond to basic medical needs, workforce housing, including a kitchen, bedrooms, washrooms, recreational facilities, a lounge, as well as a laundry. Some of the services available at the lodge are going to include communicable disease prevention and management protocols, workforce wellness supports, social programming, security, traffic management, wireless internet and cell service. We're also committed to ensuring the lodge is a safe place for all workers and to minimize pressure on Squamish resources by ensuring workers abide by a worker code of conduct and lodge rules that foster an inclusive culture with respect for all workers. Also ensuring that worker orientation includes behavioral requirements that meet or exceed those of Fortis B C, including local community and indigenous cultural awareness. Also by providing support for workers, which includes mental health, addictions and consent training. Also by providing security on site that encourages a diverse workforce to feel safe, however includes escalation protocols if needed, and by being sensitive to traditional or cultural needs, particularly with indigenous workers. The workforce lodge is intended to start in operation June two thousand twenty-three, initially at a four hundred person capacity and then increasing to approximately six hundred during the peak construction season in two thousand twenty-five, before being decommissioned after the end of December two thousand twenty-five. This graph shows the breakdown of non-local temporary workers by the component of the project they'll be working on. The tunnel workers being the most consistent year-round and the pipeline workers being seasonal. These numbers have changed even since sharing them recently with the mayor, however, should stabilize as we engage general contractors and receive workforce numbers directly from them. Workforce accommodations prior to the two thousand twenty-three tourist season is now being explored and supported by Tourism Squamish, with interest being shown by Quest University and local hotels. We're committed to an ongoing engagement with the community, both now and during construction, in order to increase project awareness and respond to inquiries and concerns. This commitment is embedded within a community services and infrastructure management plan, which requires an adaptive management approach that monitors the project's effect on community services and infrastructure during construction. This plan is intended to be submitted to the Environmental Assessment Office and Squamish Nation later this spring. Earlier, I mentioned the status of engaging general contractors. Each of these contracts contains requirements to firstly demonstrate how they will mitigate construction impacts on the community, also to develop plans that prioritize indigenous and local participation before hiring outside the region, thirdly, to demonstrate how they intend to relate with the District of Squamish in a professional and efficient manner, and fourthly, to develop a system for reporting socio-economic data. Fortis remains committed to hiring local and indigenous people for E G P wherever possible. It's our priority to ensure the local community has the opportunity to benefit from the project through jobs and material procurement and to reduce the pressure on local services for out-of-town workers. As general contractors are being engaged, we're pleased with their willingness to train and employ individuals within the community who are living with barriers to employment. Work B C, local N G Os have both provided us with information and encouragement to ensure that E G P can provide individuals with personal supports, increased skills and experience to hopefully lift their careers after the project is complete. In addition to this, while E G P provides temporary jobs, Fortis is also implementing strategies that seek to identify individuals for possible future careers with the company. We intend developing a modest legacy project that will benefit the community in some substantive ways. More to come on this in the future. Our commitment to Squamish is to leave the community better off when the project is complete.
Mr. Scholberg, sorry to interrupt. We're just halfway through our time, and so I just want to make sure that we are close to the end of the presentation to leave time for questions.
This is the last slide. If I can do one more minute, I knew I was going to be a little bit long-winded and I apologize for that.
All right. Thank you very much.
The I won't go into all of the next steps here. This is a map of two thousand twenty-two leading into construction next year. The workforce lodge request for proposal is intended to go out to the market soon with contractor selection scheduled for the fall. Construction is scheduled to begin with a tunnel contractor mobilizing in early two thousand twenty-three, followed by the pipeline contractor later in two thousand twenty-three. We want to hear from the community about our proposed changes to workforce lodging, so we will be holding a public information session in Squamish on April the twenty-seventh. This session will be an opportunity to learn more about these changes, ask questions and provide input. And we'll intend conducting another public information session before construction begins and details on that will be shared on talkingenergy dot C A R website. Thank you for your attention and I apologize for going over time and I welcome your questions now.
That's all right. I just want to make sure we had lots of time. So I have Mayor Elliott and Counselor Herford and then Counselor Peddengill.
Thanks very much for coming today. One of the things we've done at the district that that we're proud of is implemented a social procurement policy. And so with your workforce lodge R F P going out, is it possible to include evaluation points for buying local or using local suppliers? So I know these work camps can sometimes just go with big national providers, but we have a really vibrant food and beverage and agricultural sector here and I'm wondering if there's an openness to entertain that in this contract.
There's certainly an interest in 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 doing exactly that. How that's going to be reflected in the contract, I'm not sure. We've met with the three interested contractors and they've all expressed a very strong openness in working with us with respect to procurement of local services. And we understand that that's probably the area that's going to attract local employment, but we're also aware that we don't want to just steal employees that are already working here in town. There's a delicate balance. And one of your staff in particular have been really helpful and we intend staying engaged with her on that because we we want to support the community. We 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 know that hiring local, it's good. It's good for business. It's good for the local economy, but not at the expense of detrimenting other businesses too. So to answer your question, yes.
All right. It'd be great to see local brews and kombucha and farm products at your work camp, for sure. My second question is, and I know my colleague is going to ask you questions about pipeline safety, I'm sure, but can you remind me again that this, the pipeline, as it moves towards wood fiber, it's not a constant flow of gas. Is it ever storing gas or is there a time when the pipeline is empty? So is it sort of an on-off when wood fiber needs it, they turn it on, or is it constantly flowing, or will you be storing gas in the pipeline?
I'll just pretend a little bit like I'm an engineer for a moment. It it'll never be empty. It'll always be pressurized, but the pressure in the pipe and the amount of gas flowing will depend entirely on wood fibers, the rate at which they're they're taking it. So yeah, it it would, the rate of flow and the pressure will depend on wood fibers rate of taking it out at their end.
Anything further? No. Counselor Herford, then Counselor Peddengill, then Counselor Anderson.
Thank you. The the proposed site for the for the workforce accommodation, I've spent quite a bit of time in that in that area, so I'm very familiar with it, but it's been really hard to get a bus in there without some substantive upgrades to the road and and so in that stretch, even all the way, say, from night from the highway to the to the camp, are there pieces of that in particular that would need to be upgraded to allow your transportation plan that involves buses to actually access the the site?
Very timely question. We were just talking about that earlier this morning. Yes, there there are going to need to be some changes made to the Mamquam and Powerhouse roads. In particular, the road leaving Powerhouse and heading into the site will be mostly a new road that we're trying to avoid your wells. So there will be road work done and maintenance during construction as well, yes.
And just at this early point to provide some some feedback from the from the that we heard on in relation to another project, but the Mamquam Forest Service Road, as it runs behind Valley Cliff, has all sorts of concerns around the traffic, the dust, and so some sort of mitigation factor for the folks directly adjacent to that I would expect to see as part of the the plan there. The second part, I actually have an acquaintance of mine that lived in the Highlands and worked at the at the at the hydro facility there, and it was substantially faster for him to walk from the Highlands to work every morning than it is to drive all the way around. So with that camp being there and with the bridge being so close, the pedestrian bridge being so close to the Mamquam or to, well, Quest as as a whole or the Highlands neighborhood, how I'm I'm having a a hard time sort of fathoming that not being a point of traffic for whatever for whatever purpose. And I'm just curious if or how that was, that particular piece has been thought of already, as I'm sure it has, and if staff at the camp or workforce at the camp are going to have their own private vehicles there as well, because I think parking it near Quest would be much more convenient than parking at the site to go to the grocery store, to go anywhere else when you're not working. I'm just curious how that piece plays in. And I guess the second part of that is of these seven hectares or seventeen point three acres, how much of that is just staff parking for this upwards of, I think there's a peak was like five hundred folks or something like that.
Thanks, Counselor, and I'll just touch briefly on a number of them. First of all, the the dust on Mamquam relative to Valley Cliff. Dust is a huge concern all all through town, right? And on our construction sites, it's going to be a major issue to deal with. I'm going to take that one back. We're we're just doing planning around the the road access now and that's going to need to factor in. There has been talk about it, but I'll just make sure that that that's factored in big time. On the north access, we deliberately, we looked at that, but we deliberately avoided a northerly access to the lodge site because we didn't want to have vehicles traveling all up through that residential area by Quest. And we just thought that that would be a a burden on the community that would be unpleasant. And so we're limiting the about the the access from the south. The worker vehicle storage, that is part of the reason for going from two to seven hectares. We are going to need to have an area for all the construction workers and the workers on site to store their vehicles. We expect that a lot of the workers, local workers that are providing service to the lodge, will live there and there will be room for them to be accommodated. And the seven hectare site, did I did I touch on all the all the things or did I miss one?
No, I think you got, I think you got most, I think you got most of the most of it there. So parking on site was the was one of the pieces. And it is a short walk to the to the Highlands and the first stop is the university, but so just ensuring that the 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 access to town is done through the vehicle through, although I'd like to see them walk and take transit from the university. So I'm kind of of both minds here. So I think some 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 particular planning around this needs to, really needs to occur to make sure that we don't just have only the worst part of it happening rather than the beneficial parts of being that close to the community. So yeah, and I think the dust, the dust bit, I think a couple kilometers of pavement would go a long way for a lot of people, but I'm going to, I'll leave it there for now. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Peddengill and Counselor Anderson.
Yeah, thanks. A couple of things, and this one's a small one I brought up before. I think the community table, am I correct in thinking the community still isn't invited to the table? You need to be appointed by a specific organization to attend. Is that correct?
What we what we what we've done there, Counselor, is wanted to make sure that there is a collective voice that represents all of the major social and economic factors in the community. And so it's, it has grown from its inception. We get what, upwards of twenty people? Twenty, twenty or so people there. And it's it's a it's a size and it's a skill set that really helps understand what we're doing and provides value feedback. And so what we intend doing is holding another one, of course, next month, but also using the community table as a as a touch point to measure our performance against what we said we would do all the way through construction to the end.
Okay, I'll I'll just comment. I don't, I wouldn't say it's fair to call it the community table. I think community table in my mind, a lot of people mind the community can show up and be part of the conversation. I don't think a lot of people feel that. So I'll just make that comment again. I I was struck by one of your comments that, you know, these are just temporary jobs, but you'll work, maybe work to find some people, jobs at Fortis afterwards. And I'm a bit intrigued by that because Forest is primarily a fossil fuel company and we need to, we know we need to transition away from fossil fuels as quickly as possible. So shouldn't, wouldn't it make more sense for the goal to be to transition these people into other industries? So take some of the skills, construction skills they've learned, but put it into more future-proof industries?
Fair comment. And and I think a lot of the local jobs that we're going to be able to provide up skills for people are in areas like security, flag people, things that are not, things that are more generic to construction jobs than just a natural gas project. So I think those those are good opportunities. But the full-time employment idea is is new for us. We are, we're we're mindful that while these are temporary jobs, there are good full-time jobs, even at Fortis. And, uh, we, we do have a lot of, uh, a lot of our effort is, is put towards, um, you know, helping Clean BC meet its targets, for example, uh, move towards renewables, further out, moving towards hydrogen. We have an increasing number of people that have a focus on, um, the, uh, that renewable future. And so, you know, um, who knows where the, these people might find their employment? But, um, uh, that's something at this point is aspirational. We don't have a distinct plan around that, but it, but it's an interest and it's something that we're going to be focused on attempting to do.
Okay, thanks. My last question for now, and it's maybe the last one I'll, I'll get, seeing the chairs nod. And, and I've asked about this before, but I, I'm wondering when we can see an objective, uh, risk assessment. Uh, the CSA standard Z662 outlines that one needs to be done and has guidelines. I believe they've become more stringent in terms of what it needs to look like. So I'm trying to understand the risk to the community so we can, because as a municipality, it's our job to zone appropriately. That's sort of where we have some ability, but if we don't understand what the risk is, we can't do that. And, and so I'm wondering when that's coming in. And just sort of, um, related to that, I've come across another standard, a companion standard Z663, which has a bunch of recommendations, including don't build under roads. And when I look at the, the gas you're planning on delivering, it's roughly equivalent to 13% of all the gas delivered to, to residences in Canada, that's in 2018. So that's the sort of equivalency. So it's a massive amount of gas, seemingly under Finch Drive against the recommendations. You don't build under roads generally. And so I'm, I'm, I think, I feel like it's really important for us to understand this risk. So, so when can we get the, that sort of objective risk analysis?
And, uh, to be fair, you've asked for that for quite a few months now and I acknowledge that. I mentioned to you last fall that we were updating our quantitative risk assessment and, uh, we have. And we're preparing a response. We will provide it to you. I'll be honest with you. I just received an email for, on that today, on the, on that this morning. And, uh, we'll, we'll have a response ready within a month to six weeks and we'll be providing that. But let me just say this, that by complying with the Oil and Gas Commission requirements, which means CSA Z662 and other requirements, um, we are exceeding the district's design threshold for development. Uh, I know that you require developers in certain parts of town to go through risk assessments and, uh, the OGC, uh, uh, minimum threshold requirements allow us to beat that. So if you're concerned about, uh, the risk of pipeline along new areas of, uh, developable property, we, we can, the CSA requirements and the OGC compliance exceeds that.
Thank you. I'll, I'll look forward to receiving that report. Just note though, uh, as part of our cheek eye fan hazard analysis, we adopted a standard of, um, no new development in areas where the risk to loss of life is greater than one and 100,000 per year. And so that's the sort of, I'm, I'm wanting to understand what the risk is at different distances from the pipeline along the route. And if, if, if that's in the report, that understanding, that would be fantastic. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Pedengill, I'll go to councillor Anderson and then myself.
Mr. Shobri, I look forward to the April 27th public information meeting regarding the workforce lodge. And I'm sure many people in the committee will, will be interested in that event. And my questions have largely been addressed or, or points made by councillor Hereford and they were concerned roads. I'll just pass on a couple of observations. The roads that you'll be using, the Mamcom Forest Service Road, a portion of it, the Stowamis Forest, uh, Forest Service Road for the pipeline construction. Uh, we've also touched on the north access or the potential and your evaluation of it via the Ring Creek Forest Service Road, which is a bit of a problem for us these days with recent, uh, flood events. Our council has been engaged, these are all natural resource roads. I might point out that the, uh, Powerhouse Springs Road has had some tenure issues or questions raised recently as to who should take over that road. So these are puzzles and I just, just raise them for further discussion at your public information meeting with other stakeholders. But on the topic of roads and our advocacy with the province, nobody knows who's, how to pay for improvements and maintenance, who should be paying for improvement and maintenance. These are longstanding questions. I'm sure that Fortis BC has been engaged in these questions around the province, uh, ongoing. Councillor Hereford, Mayor Elliott and myself are also directors of these, our joint venture with the Squamish Nation, Squamish Community Forest. Uh, we are also road users and we'll face together the issue with other, uh, tenure holders, commercial recreation, as to who pays for maintenance. But I believe it is a topic that should be addressed in relation to your project, would be interested in, as I'm sure others would be, as to your role in maintenance costs for the roads that I've mentioned. And I look forward to, we also have Woodlot License 28 as a stakeholder here. Anyway, I'll just pass on the observation, I look forward to opportunities for more discussion among stakeholders about these resource roads, who pays for maintenance and how we work this out among stakeholders. Thank you.
Thank you very much councillor. I think we've taken some notes and we're, we're going to carry those back to our design team that's looking at, uh, the road use in its early stages. So we're going to make them aware of that. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll go to councillor French then myself.
Thanks Chair. I, I was a little surprised today, um, by the concern for sending traffic close to, um, our wells. And my, my, my thinking on this is I would way rather the current road be used and have that traffic pass by those wells than create a whole new road access in that area. So just, I'd like to get a sense for how committed are you to, um, avoiding our wells as opposed to potentially building a whole new route to avoid that area?
Well, um, we, we thought it would be in the, in the district's, uh, preference or best interest to stay away from those wells. Uh, we also, now I haven't been up there, okay? I'm just hearing secondhand that it's quite steep as well. And, um, we're concerned about, you know, buses and food delivery and, and vehicles using that road as well. With the grades, we, we, we have entertained that road, but we are now preferring an alternative that stays away from, uh, away from the wells for that purpose. But, um, if, if, uh, if there's interest in taking that discussion offline with your staff or yourself, we'd be happy to do that and, and get a better perspective of why the district might prefer that option. Uh, it's a good time to have that discussion now.
That, okay, great. And actually, as I contemplate the steep stretches on either side of the wells, yeah, councillor Hereford knows what I'm talking about, um, super challenging. So probably better left to engineers than council members. Thank you Chair.
Thank you for acknowledging that we are not good at road building around this table. Um, a few questions, uh, for myself. There had been previous discussion around electrifying the compressor station at Wood Fiber LNG. I'm just curious where that discussion is at and if it will be electrified.
No, the compressor sta- the compressor station will be, the, the compressors will be fueled by natural gas. And, uh, the reason for that is really quite simple. We cannot get a, a stable power from wood fiber to serve the compressor station. Uh, the geography of the terrain is very challenging to build an electrical substation for ourselves. And, uh, it's, we, we've looked seriously at that, we've double looked at it, we've triple looked at it. And, uh, in the long scheme of things, going natural gas compressors is just the right thing to do.
And it's disappointing to hear, but, um, thank you for the clarification. Uh, my other question and you folks have a heads up on this one is around coordination on community engagement and documentation with Wood Fiber LNG. And there wasn't a huge amount of, uh, forthcomingness from your counterparts in our previous discussion around how the two of you are working together in terms of coordination. And I, from my understanding, in terms of your outreach with the community, has been a little bit more forthcoming in the past year. And you had a much more distinctive timeline on work going forward than what we saw from Wood Fiber. And so I'm curious about how you advance this work, um, if we don't have the clarity from Wood Fiber on their timelines and their engagement processes.
So, um, so we, we have some pretty distinct ideas as, as we're sharing on the screen right here of how we believe, uh, the district needs to be engaged, how we believe the, uh, uh, public needs to be engaged. One of our concerns, quite frankly, is the burden on your staff around permitting. Okay, maybe this is where you're going to go, but, um, that's clearly where some coordination needs to happen. Uh, I want to meet soon with staff around our tunnel contractor. That's one of the three major contracts, but we want to get some clarity around permits, permit requirements and timelines of when those permits are needed. So with your staff, so that we can collectively have a, uh, an idea of how that burdens your staff. And, um, if there's some additional things we need to do in terms of helping staff out, you know, we need to be willing to do that. But once Wood Fiber has their plans advanced, advanced in terms of their, their permitting, for example, they need to layer into that as well and we welcome that.
I guess I'm just curious about advancing that conversation or our staff advancing that conversation with you before we have that clarity from Wood Fiber and does that risk duplicating effort?
That's a good question. I mean, we're always willing to talk and, and, and to engage with district staff. And they've been very responsive and great to work with and I, I applaud that. With, with our tunnel contractor now on board, I, I'm prepared to set up a meeting with district staff. It, it, it won't be until at least next, next month because the tunnel contractor is building their plans right now that are pursuant to their contract. But after that's been done, I'd like to set up a meeting with district staff and start looking at the permitting schedule relative to the tunnel. Uh, another one would happen later on in the spring or summer with the pipeline contractor. And whenever Wood Fiber has their permitting schedule firmed up, they need to layer in on that conversation as well.
I'm going to ask one more time, I'm sorry, but why would we do that work if we don't have clarity from Wood Fiber in terms of where they're at in their process? So I hear potentially two or three meetings that our staff are going to without the clarity from Wood Fiber that this is going forward.
Well, there, my Wood Fiber colleagues have left the room, but, uh, uh, you know, that's something that, uh, we can take up with your staff. They're here, listening to this and we can talk that out further with them and, and, uh, and, uh, listen to their perspective and, and, uh, and be guided by that.
Thank you. I'd also suggest you take it up with Wood Fiber, um, because they are your joint partner in this, whether you like it or not. Councillor Hereford, you had one last question. Please make it quick.
I'm going to start with a really quick comment and then the quick question. I think, thank you for the presentation today. I think it's a, the two presentations, I think, stand and start contrast to the clarity you're able to provide us. So wherever you stand on the, on the project, we have some clarity of, of what's, as much as possible as, as what's proposed. So I appreciate that from, from your end and, um, your partners have work to do. The, I'm curious, the tunnel project, um, at what point do we understand where and when and how the, the tunnel spoils, uh, get moved through the community? Cause I think that's one of the biggest moving pieces, um, for, for us and possibly one of the bigger impacts, um, potential impacts. I'm just curious where that particular issue stands or at what point we'll have some more clarity around that.
And that, that's what I'm, I'm going to have to take away. The disposal of the tunnel material is responsible by the contractor and that's the contractor we've just hired. And I expect that shortly, uh, they're going to be, uh, making decisions around that. Because coming out of that, we then need to have to talk with district staff around traffic management. Uh, that's going to be a huge matter. There's going to be a lot of rock coming out of the Wood Fiber end. And at this point, it looks like we've found a spot for most or all of it on site. The soft tun- tunnel materials coming out of the BC rail end is probably where you're most getting at. Because that's going to be, uh, oh, I possibly ha- approximately half, it's not quite half of the, the, the tunnel is soft, soft materials, but they'll be coming out of BC rail and disposed at a location truck through town. And that hasn't been determined yet. Can I promise to get back to you on that, uh, around the timeline?
Yeah, tha- that's fine. So the, the destination and the mode hasn't been decided yet.
Correct.
Okay, I'd like to just point out that it's in a rail yard and it'd be great if that was part of the solution to minimize the impact to our community. Thank you.
Thanks.
All right. Thank you council for your questions. Thank you to our delegation for being here and for the update for our community. It's important to understand where this project is at. So thank you for your transparency and your continued engagement. Council, we will take a 10 minute recess and come back at 2:40. Thank you. Great. Welcome back everybody. We are in committee of the whole. Item 41, youth services agreement. Under the staff reports, we have Ms. Guest here with us, the Director of Recreation Services, acting. Please go ahead. A reminder that when you're ready to start speaking, to turn your microphone on please.
Good afternoon, uh, mayor, chair and council. Thank you for the introduction. My name is Devon Guest for those, uh, in the audience. My name is Devon Guest, Acting Director of Recreation Services here at the District of Squamish. I would like to, uh, just take a moment to acknowledge Krista German, Manager of Youth Services for Sea to Sky Community Services and, uh, Chelsea Brewbaker, Associate Director of Program Delivery in, uh, in the audience today. So, um, thank you council. This is a presentation on, uh, the agreement and the relationship between, uh, the District of Squamish and Sea to Sky Community Services, specifically the youth services agreement. Uh, staff fine tuned the objectives here today to focus on, uh, the agreement and the commitments from, uh, Sea to Sky Community Services. The objectives of the report, the objective of the report is to discuss, uh, the agreement and how the agreement supports the, uh, the shared goals of the youth strategy. And not necessarily the goals and aspirations of youth services. This of course does not preclude, uh, the discussions on the goals and aspirations of youth services and the youth strategy. However, it is focused on the service agreement here today. Uh, as a quick background, uh, November 2019, uh, the Squamish Youth Strategy was adopted by council, uh, followed closely by, uh, the closure of the youth center, uh, in March 2020, along with, uh, the pandemic and the public health orders, uh, that we have experienced over the last couple of years. The new Squamish Youth Hub, uh, is anticipated to open July of 2022, which is very exciting for the summer. And then, um, if endorsed, the, uh, service agreement before council today would end, uh, March 2023. It is time for a new agreement and this new agreement recalibrates the, the resources to better serve all youth and it increase all youth participation in what has been mostly free and low cost programming activities and events. This is the layout of what Sea to Sky Community Services refers to as their youth services portfolio. Note, what is denoted as Squamish Youth Services is what the agreement with the District of Squamish funds, along with grants supported by different levels and agencies of various government. along with grants supported by different levels and agencies of various government. So in the context of the youth strategy, the youth hub, uh, is the entire first floor of the Spirit Creek Building. Foundry, Cedar Sky Community Services, uh, and the youth hub. But it is also the, the name of the drop-in space exclusively for youth at the Spirit Creek Building, um, attached to Cedar Sky Foundry. So what we like to say, if we think of Squamish as a campus, then, uh, the, the centralized activities that happen in the, in the hub, both inside and out, are, are the hub. Cedar Sky Community Services and Recreation Services, uh, recognizes that programs, that the programs, activities and events that can happen in and around Squamish's amenities can happen in a variety of locations. However, they are anchored in what is referred to as the youth hub. As many of you have seen, these are some renders of the new, uh, youth hub. And we will transition now to speaking directly to the details of the service agreement before Council today. So the agreement objectives, uh, within the context of Squamish Youth Services, and the District of Squamish is to really normalize service and optimize the available resources and funds. So normalizing service really speaks to acknowledging the role that social service does play within the youth services delivery model. And the work Cedar Sky Community Services and the district have done to establish the balance of that right fit model for all youth in our community. And that right fit can be described as, um, as upstream recreational cultural programming in alignment with, uh, the youth services strategy. Um, and of course, optimizing, uh, the resources available within the budget to, uh, ensure we are meeting the objectives of the Squamish Youth Strategy. So this is an agreement to really, uh, bridge the gap in the two models. Our quote-unquote "old" way of doing things expired with the expiration, with the adoption of the youth strategy. And of course, uh, COVID and transitioning buildings, uh, are two major, um, elements in this agreement as well. Both organizations are not ready to call the transition to a new model complete yet. So this is why the one-year, um, service agreement is the right fit for right now. So what the district and its shared goals, uh, of the youth strategy will see through Cedar Sky Community Services is an agreement that recognizes the drop in nature youth are looking for in the youth hub, as told through the strategy, along with monthly, weekly programs, activities and events for a broad range of youth in the community. Further to that, increasing participation will always be a goal of the agreement and the work plan. And staff, both at the district and Cedar Sky Community Services, are optimistic in the model to reach more youth across Squamish, which of course we will report back to Council. And with that, I will present the following recommendation for Council's consideration and take any questions and discussions. Thank you.
Thank you for the presentation, Ms. Guest. Council, questions? Counselor Anderson.
Thank you. Ms. Guest, we had a presentation from the Squamish Youth Council and various projects and programs were outlined to Council. It was very interesting, um, about three weeks ago. And one thing I noted was, um, nobody brought up the theme of volunteering, volunteering in the community. And I raised it as a question here in relation to this program. And as I look at all of this, the subprograms, uh, related to the Youth Services Agreement and programming by ourselves and our partners, where does or can encouraging and facilitating community volunteering on the part of youth fit in? Now, I'll give the same example I did three weeks ago. Everybody's excited to see the herring return to house sound, but we can't find, or the groups that are involved in this can't find the volunteers to do the work to clean the herring surfaces that has to be done every spring. We just can't, there, there's, we just can't bring people out. So many projects around the community, projects with seniors, maintenance issues for seniors with homes and this sort of thing, and exciting volunteer opportunities. Where can this fit in to the picture of programs for youth that we're talking about today?
Thank you, Counselor Anderson. I do believe that, um, the, the staffing model, uh, proposed by Cedar Sky Community Services under Youth Services would in time, if expressed by youth, have the capacity to help facilitate, possibly with S D forty-eight, programs, activities, uh, related to volunteerism. But they would, they would, there's an opportunity there.
Perhaps as some kind of an information hub or a notice board services, if you like, uh, for volunteer opportunities. I just, I just thought I had to raise that. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, just so you know, Ms. Guest, when you're not speaking, we'll ask you to turn your microphone off. And yeah, I think I saw Counselor Herford, then Counselor Peddingill.
Thank you. I think our tech support has your, your back on the mic on and off thing. I was curious about the term of this. What's the, why the one-year nature?
Thank you for the question, Counselor Herford. Because of the transition time that we are in right now. As discussed, I will go back to a few slides, uh, just to further highlight, uh, the comment that we're really in an interim state. The, the disruption experienced, um, by Cedar Sky Community Services and Youth Services, with the closure of the youth center, the onslaught of the pandemic and, uh, the new foundry building, Spirit Creek Building and Youth Hub, really creates, um, an environment of disruption. And we're looking to stabilize that environment first before, uh, entering into, uh, a longer agreement.
Thank you. And when would the formulation of that sort of start to take place? Like, is that, are we thinking that there'll be another one year needed? Or are we trying to avoid that and get to something more substantive? Before, uh, I think there's some requirement for reporting in the first, at the end of the first year. And I'm, that just seemed, the date of the reporting seemed really close to the end of the contract. So I'm just, I'm just curious where that, where that lays.
Thank you. Once, uh, once the service provider, uh, kind of has moved in and is operating, uh, the, specifically the youth hub, I think we will begin to, uh, enter into discussions about long-term what youth services, um, in the context of the youth strategy, is doing that best serves. And so, um, we would be looking into fall, uh, before we put that together.
Thank you. Um, I look forward, I look forward to seeing that and giving some long-term, uh, stability, both to the partners and to the, to the youth as to what's going to be happening there. But I under, I understand that transitional time is, uh, has been a bit of a wild ride, and I'm happy that we're near the end of it. So, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Peddingill.
Yeah, thanks. And I apologize if you've already answered this. My mind's bouncing around a bit, but, um, we have a new, new physical space and a new model. How is, and I don't want to imply any sort of preference, because I'm just, I'm not sure I have one, but, is there any expectation that the, like theoretically, the service could be anywhere in the community? I, I understand that's the longer-term, at least, goal. But would we expect, uh, in the short term, the programming and services and so on are really directed at that physical space to try and activate it, and that's what we should expect? Or from day one, would we expect sort of stuff throughout the community, sort of equally with this strategy?
I have put back up the working-fun model of youth services.
We can't see it. Help is on the way.
And I think with, uh, the resources available, uh, it is, um, we are going to see, uh, the majority of the programs, activities and events kind of happen within, uh, the youth hub. But there will be opportunities and partnerships done throughout the community, uh, based on, um, the voice of the youth through the youth strategy.
Your slides are here. You think you just need to advance them to the one that you're looking for. Does that answer your question, Counselor Peddingill?
Yeah, I, I, I had that up. I just wasn't clear if that was the youth hub is the physical space or the youth hub is in the sort of center of youth activities, sort of. Anyways, that, the answer clarifies. Thank you.
Council, any further questions? I had one, and then I'll put Counselor Herford back on the list. I'm just curious, uh, one of the rationales for this is to stabilize funding. And I'm just curious where we're at with respect to previous years' agreements in terms of dollar value of service.
The, the current service agreement, or is for, uh, the status budgeted amount of $280,000.
And so that hasn't changed from previous years?
That isn't, uh, Cedar Sky, the agreement received an increase in 2021. But prior to that, it had been, uh, roughly $250,000 for a number of years.
Thank you for that clarification. Counselor Herford.
Thank you. I'm just, on the, uh, the term piece, I'm curious, on the, the foundry portion of it, what is the term of that agreement? Could you remind me of that? I'm just curious about aligning sort of future pieces, and I think this is an important step along the way, but I'm already kind of getting it, maybe perhaps ahead of myself at the very least on, on that.
I'm sorry, I'm not able to answer the, that question. I'm, I'm not aware of the term of the foundry.
Yeah, thank you. Um, again, not important for this, for this particular piece, but for that next planning piece, I'm curious around sort of aligning the, the end dates, so that if there does need to be a change, it can be as smooth as possible going forward, although I'm cheering for its success on as many levels as we can find.
Mayor Elliott.
I just, um, through the chair, wanted to, uh, say to Counselor Anderson that I signed a delegation request for the nonprofit network, so you can bring up the volunteer idea again. And, um, we also have the Volunteer Connector website that posts all the volunteer opportunities in Squamish. But it's a good question, and, and they'll be here in a few weeks to talk about National Volunteer Week. Uh, and foundry is in agreement with the province. It's a provincial program foundry. And so that contracts with Cedar Sky Community Services.
Counselor Herford, if you want to respond, you have to dissociate the chair with your microphone, please. I'm hoping it's a forever. We wouldn't want to lose our foundry.
Thank you. And forever is a fine term to have with, uh, a service as well. I was just curious if it was, uh, if it had a renewal date or something, that we should align some future policy uh, around the rest of delivery of service, um, with, just in case it was to come to an end and it could be smooth. But that's fine. Thank you.
Counsel, go ahead, Mayor. Go ahead, Mayor Elliott.
I was going to move the staff recommendation for a one-year service agreement with Cedar Sky Community Services for the provision of youth services.
Thank you. That's moved by Mayor Elliott, seconded by Counselor Herford. Comments? Go ahead, Mayor Elliott.
I, I think the one-year agreement makes sense as we all adjust to having this beautiful new facility and understanding, uh, how those, how all the partners that are involved with, um, youth strategy are now going to interact with, um, the youth hub as well as foundry. There's so many interconnections and, and crossovers, so I think it makes sense to put this agreement in place, adjust, um, and, uh, and then consider next steps from there. But I'm glad to see Cedar Sky, uh, working with us on this next iteration to deliver, um, youth services for all youth in Squamish. Um, and looking forward to having that, that just hangout space for youth. And that's come through loud and clear in certainly all my discussions with the youth council, but we also saw it in the youth strategy. So, um, I guess July can't come soon enough. So, thank you for your work on this.
Thank you. I have Counselor Anderson, then Counselor Herford.
Thank you. I just wanted to observe that since our, uh, last discussions of this topic, I, I'm finding that the definitions, the clarity of the picture of the suite of programs and services, the service delivery model are very, very nicely presented and very clear. And, uh, this is a big help. One of our concerns was that branding issue, youth hub, foundry. And I think that, uh, the current, the present, uh, presentation before us has really ticked off all the boxes as far as I'm concerned on, on adding that clarity. Thank you.
Counselor Herford.
Thank you. I'm, I'm excited to see the, uh, the build-out and the, the doors open on our new, on our new facility. And, uh, and this, and this, um, and this step is, uh, a, a strong step towards that. And I look forward to, uh, seeing how all those things fit together and seeing how, um, the, the programming in the space is received by the youth of our community. And, uh, and then onwards to a longer-term, um, uh, deal. So I appreciate that, and thank you for all your work on it.
Counselor French.
Speaking in favor of the motion, unlike Counselor Herford, I was wondering about that one-year term, and I'm, I'm satisfied with the answer. I think it makes a ton of sense to, uh, first walk and then run and fly. And I anticipate that after that one year, we'll likely enter into longer term. Once we get a few of, um, the early issues sorted out and ironed out. Uh, this is a great step forward for the youth in our community, and I'm, I'm looking forward to, uh, when the doors open so that, uh, young folks have got a place to hang out. Thanks.
Counselor Peddingill.
Yeah, I will be supporting this as well. I'm, I'm really, uh, liking the, the youth hub diagram that, that you showed up. I'm just remembering when I was a youth, uh, which doesn't seem like a long time ago, but it was. But, uh, and I'm not in favor of commercializing the youth so much, but I am glad to see that local businesses are on here. I remember one of our hangouts, when I was in my late teens, early twenties, was a, a, a T-shirt shop where they sold tea. And we had, they'd let us have bands and shows there all the time. And, and so a lot of the places we did hang out were private businesses. And I think finding that, that, um, integration and support from private businesses in a, I guess, in a positive way, I, I think is, is a piece that, um, I don't know, it just resonates with me along with some of the other things on this. So glad to see the general direction and excited to see it move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. I will also be supporting the motion. I just want to say a thank you to staff and to our community partners for their creativity and flexibility over the last two years. The loss of the youth center and the pandemic at the same time was extremely challenging. And I know I saw some really creative ways to continue to engage our youth through what we know was a really challenging time for everybody, but for them in particular. So I just want to say a thank you for that continued work. Like, my colleagues have said, uh, July can't come soon enough. We heard from the presentation from the Mayor's Youth Council that that loss of space is really impacting them. And so having that building open will be very exciting, and I look forward to seeing the doors open and to working out who's operating where and in which way with this new space. And I agree that a one-year term to do this is the right way to approach it. And like my council colleagues, uh, hope that that goes into a longer term, uh, in future years when we have better clarity of how it all works. But, um, just a thank you for that continued creativity in terms of new spaces, new places, and different ways of delivering programming. I think it's been really important and really valuable for our youth. And so with that, I will call to question. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much for your time today. All right, Council, next up on our agenda is, uh, item 4-2, Quarterly Financial Report Year End 2021. We have Mr. Russell. We'll just get set up here. We'll take, take a quick two-minute recess just to transfer over, but don't go far. Great, thank you. Welcome back to Committee of the Whole on item 4-2, Quarterly Financial Report Year End for 2021. We have Mr. Russell. Our senior financial analyst is here with us. Please go ahead.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Madam Chair, members of council. My name is Roland Russell. I'm senior financial analyst and beside me is Heather Boxer, our CFO. And I will be outlining today to the committee of the hall, our Q4 financial. Reports or financial results for the year. Prior to doing that, I am going to go over to Ms. Glende and ask her if she would like to provide a brief introduction, please.
Thank you, Chair. And Roland, if you could advance the slide, please. So this is our Q4 quarterly variance report, but stating the obvious, it's also a de facto year end, although it's not the official audited year end financial statements, but it is. An overview of the entire 2021 fiscal year. Goes without saying that there were pandemic impacts and they were acutely felt in 2021. It was almost as though there was a delay, but certainly. Despite those impacts, there was positive progress and I have to point out recreation services was definitely the area. Likely the most hit by the restrictive public health orders and managed still to provide services and programming. Our electronic council meetings, I think it feels like we've been doing it for a very long time and we're getting used to them, but still it was not an easy feat to pull that off. Not one council meeting has been missed in the last fiscal year. And then staff adapted to include public attendance when we were authorized to do so through those public health orders. The COVID-19 B C restart grant was certainly helpful. In 2020, the district received $3.76 million in grant funding. To assist with the cost impacts of COVID-19. In 2020 and 2021, the district spent 2.8 million of that. And an example, I mean, certainly it was to help with the loss of revenue in recreation, additional costs associated with pandemic. But also it helped us to bolster staffing in areas that were really quite busy and unexpectedly so. And an example would be the building department. Where we added additional staff in response to the increase in building permits and construction. There is still a balance of $950,000 that will be utilized to cover COVID-related costs and projects in 2022. Of particular note is the investment in climate change that occurred in 2021 and that was $1.8 million. For mitigation and adaptation projects, including the landfill gas capture and flare, the municipal energy and emissions plan and integrated stormwater management plan, just to name a few. And operationally, I'd like to point out as well that. Staff did a great job of forwarding our truth and reconciliation work within our operational budget. And particularly around some substantial cultural learning for both staff and council. So we continue to move the dial. On our truth and reconciliation work and we're we're quite proud of that, although we recognize there's a long way to go. Diversity, equity and inclusion is something that council highlighted and directed staff to make a larger priority in 2021 and again through our operational budgets. That work has been forwarded. The IDEA Committee, which stands for inclusion, diversity, equity and access, was formed. Staff research, staff workshops continue and they're making great headway on a formal strategy that will be presented shortly. So it was a particularly challenging year despite the positive forward momentum on many projects. We've heard that and we're all aware of supply chain disruptions, cost escalations, delays from external pressures, whether that's consultant availability or. Supply. Despite that, we did manage to move forward some key projects, primarily the Valley Cliff Fire Hall, which is slated to be completed in 2022. So that's a. Project that staff are quite proud of. Tantalus Fire Hall and Public Works Facilities to other large capital projects in our real estate facility master planner in the planning, scoping and cost estimation phases. The district did achieve a 58% completion rate, so that's budget spent for capital projects and 48% completion rate, so budget spent. For special operating. Now that is certainly less than 2020 and we absolutely recognize that. The data that we have from the U B W system through the technology transformation project is is really fabulous in terms of being able to understand these measures going forward. So we don't have. A long history of this performance measure yet. Roland will speak more to it in his presentation. So although we're lower than 2020 and you know, it's not great, we can see why in a number of areas. That said, going forward, we are also dedicated as staff to use this data to continually improve our planning, our understanding of capacity. And how we complete on projects and achieve a better completion rate going forward. In terms of tax funded carry forward in capital, and again, more detail will be provided in the next presentation about the budget amendment. $46,000 in capital, that's tax funded, will be carried forward and in special operating, it's $190,000 of tax funded carry forward. But I'll let Roland speak in more detail for the carry forward in his budget amendment presentation. So with that, I'll pass it back over to Mr. Russell to get more into the detail. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Ms. Glende. We'll go in the wrong direction. So I think that, sorry, it was tripping me up as we had. A slide in there to kick off the start. At both ends of Ms. Glende's presentation, so I think I mixed myself up as to which direction I was going. So on our agenda today, we're going to talk about a number of different things. So first area up will be. For the fourth quarter will be to talk, speak about the financial report and so what our overall results were for the year. The second. Area for commentary will be on special. Operating and capital projects and after that we will open it up for discussion. So to start with our revenues. Is outlined in the report and highlighted here. We have three or four major drivers of revenue. Which would have which, excuse me. Which were unanticipated and therefore resulted in positive variances. Community amenity contributions. We had a very large development agreement signed last year for. Garibaldi Springs Golf Course redevelopment, which netted $3.6 million worth of community amenity contributions. We had increased building permits, which is a real good news story because it reflects. Ongoing increases in development. But it also is is a good news story because. We have built on the use of this revenue that was generated in 2021 to increase staffing in 2022. And so the results of 2021 bode very well for for this to be a positive and ongoing feature to support the community. We also got a one time increase in community works grant funding. As the federal government is is preparing to wrap up that program in 2023. 2024, I guess is when it finalizes. So their fiscal. They provided a double up of payment in the 2021 fiscal years. We got approximately an extra $900,000. And in addition to that, our utilities were able to generate revenue that was higher than anticipated. Utility revenue exceeded our estimates. In the water and sewer areas, sorry, water wastewater areas. Due to an undercount in in our customers. So the estimates for the budget. In 2021, our customer count was based on 2020. Assessment of of activity and so. It did not adequately reflect the growth in population within the community and number of homes served. So. That saw a fairly significant increase in revenue and in the waste management area or solid waste. We saw an increase in waste diversion revenue, which then goes to pay for the increases in waste diversion expenses. That was just a transition within our contract with GFL and. The interpretation of how that flow through worked was. Shall we say? It was, there was some misunderstanding and so we thought that the revenue would be lower than it actually turned out to be. So both the revenue and the expenses were higher. But again, the revenue goes to pay off the expenses, so it's not a significant problem in the long run. With respect to our expenses, we had lower interest costs and lower interest costs were due to delays in projects and project spending. So where we have. Budgeted for borrowing because our capital plan estimates that we're going to go forward with the project and therefore require. Funding from MFA, we would include the interest and venture repayment costs in our budget. And so if the project is delayed, then we won't be borrowing the money. As as early in the process and therefore we wouldn't have the interest requirement. So for example. Quanex Seadike is a fairly significant project, which is which was debt financed. And that project was delayed due to some permitting issues around, you know, in timing. Environmental things like fish windows. That all sounds good. Still trying to figure out what a fish window is, but. Sorry, I guess that's because I'm from Alberta originally, so. Lower overall special operating spending and so we note that in. With respect to our B C COVID-19 restart grant. Within that project and the operating side of that project, special operating, we're about $500,000 down and that. In general reflects a change in public health orders over the year and the impact on those of those changing public health orders. Over the year and how that has increased or or reduced our our spending requirements. So as an example, as we moved. Away from needing greeters here at Municipal Hall. That reduced the cost of legislative services. As we moved away from needing additional funding to support. Council meetings that originally we anticipated would be required in two separate places or or another area full on to to allow for public participation. That again reduced the costs in legislative services and that's a a simple example of the types of things that generated savings within. The amount that we had allocated to be recovered, to be spent and therefore recovered through the COVID restart grant. Within the completed projects. Sorry, within the special offering projects that were completed. We saved some money, some tax funded dollars, about $68,000. Like to note that, so that's a good news story. That money would be retained in the general reserve and could be used to fund other projects in the future. Continuing on with our expenses, our RCMP costs were lower than the established budget by approximately $400,000 and that value reflects. The difference in the number of RCMP officers that were available, boots in the ground, so to speak. With respect to what we had budgeted. There were a number of leaves that the RCMP experienced last year that were outside of their control and obviously outside of our control. Which meant that they provided fewer members in in service. So there were there were lower costs as a result of that. We also are looking at a lower cost for the U B C M grant and that's because that's a two phase grant. It's part one, part two. You get half the money upfront and you get the other half of the money at the end when you complete the work and so the work split over two years. So we got half the money. And then the last item that we've identified here is. There are special operating projects which were not completed and so the money wasn't spent. Some of the areas specifically that where this occurred were as is outlined there, fire engineering, planning and utilities. So from there, we will pivot to. A discussion about our special and operating, special operating, sorry. Special operating and capital projects. And one of the things that we wanted to point out this year is that we've changed our methodologies for. Reviewing and categorizing projects at year end and and this again has. Was pointed out earlier is one of the things that. Our additional software allows us to do a little more effectively and we've categorized our projects into a number of categories. So standard or. Single one time projects. These are projects where we anticipate that they will be started and completed within the fiscal year. Annual projects, annual projects generally are for ongoing maintenance or ongoing infrastructure and so they continue year after year and. For the most part have similar budgets, one year, year in, year out. Multi-phase projects, multi-phase projects are where a lot of the capital dollars are spent and that would reflect all of our. Big ticket projects such as the facilities or significant infrastructure projects such as dykes. Where we do not anticipate that the project will start and finish in one year. We actually anticipate that this will be a two or three year project. And as a result, the timing of the actual spending of that money within the project. May move or may shift from year to year depending on circumstances. And lastly, we have externally funded projects or projects which depend on external funding. Where the external funding is outside of our control. So that would often be things like grants where we are including the project because the nature of. Our red, excuse me, nature of our legislation. Forces us to include the project within the financial plan and. If we don't get the grant, we don't get the grant, we don't move forward with the project. Well. That can have a really significant impact on, you know, what your financial results look like at the end of the year. Especially when we have some large grant related projects on our books. So. That's a new classification. We've applied that classification to our results for 2021 and. This is what they would look like. So for our special operating projects, what we're seeing is we have two projects canceled. We had 20 delayed 2022. And I think if you were to look at that. Bless you. And if you were to look at the. Variance explanations, you'll see that a number of the delayed projects were a result of capacity constraints or constraints on our ability to. Get materials or supplies or capacity of our consultants to do the work. So. Again, as Ms. Glende pointed out, these are some of the issues that we were facing this year. We have a number of ongoing projects and a number of single. Year projects which which are being carried forward. We would like to reiterate that. When we speak of carry forward projects from a budgeting standpoint, we are thinking of carry forward projects as single year. Projects which were supposed to start and finish, but didn't. And so when we refer to percentage of completion, something like that, that's the metric that we are using and that's what we are measuring. Okay, and so some of the highlights with respect to special operating.
Mr. Russell, sorry to interject. We're just, I just want to check in on how many slides you have left. We're 25 minutes into a 30 minute presentation, so.
I believe I have another two or three slides.
All right, thank you.
So I just want a really quick one. There's some highlights here that I'm sure you can read faster than I can talk about. So. We do highlight some things here. We wanted to point out that. Of the single year projects completed. We completed those at 87% of the budget and therefore that generated $66,000 in savings. We also wanted to point out that. We have some externally funded projects which are well underway and will continue into next year, specifically Helping Hands, Community Strengthening Grant for Helping Hands and COVID Restart. With respect to the capital, should note that we have one project canceled. With respect to the capital, uh, should note that we have one project canceled, eight delayed until next year. Um, we have a number of projects in progress and a number of projects that were single year that are going to be carried forward to approximately nineteen. And the highlights of our capital projects would be Valley Cliff Fire Hall, Monklin Road Sewer Upgrade Phase One, we have completed that portion and due to the nature of that project, there is now a phase two, and so phase two will be undertaken in twenty twenty-two. We've completed the Airport Runway Rehabilitation Project, ongoing technology trans, transition or transformation, one of those two. Uh, we completed the Development Services and Recreation Services software were implemented and, um, both of those areas are very happy with, uh, with the progress that's been made in those areas. And we like to comment that there are some annual rehab projects that are complete and some carry forwards within the utility area specifically. Uh, to note, there was an emergency repair that we were undertaking with respect to Third Ave Waterline. Uh, that did not finish in twenty twenty-one and will continue into twenty twenty-two. And there was a purposeful pullback, or I shouldn't say pullbacks, maybe not the right term. Um, we scaled back some of the sewer, uh, ongoing sewer maintenance projects in twenty twenty-one to save money because we recognized that Monklin Sewer was going to be more expensive than we anticipated. And we wanted to put ourselves in good stead to be able to pay for that. So with that, I believe I have reached the point where it says questions and discussion. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Russell. All right, I have Counselor Herford. We'll start there.
Thank you. Um, the customer accounts in utilities, has that been corrected for twenty twenty-three? Or does this trigger sort of a recalculation? I get that it ended up being kind of a, a moot, a moot point. I'm just, um, because the expenses and the, you know, it all, it all matched. I'm just curious where we stand with that going forward.
Um, it has been fixed for twenty twenty-two. Um, you will, we saw a very significant increase in revenue streams for both water and wastewater revenues in twenty twenty-two. And that is a result of correcting the budget, um, which basically was just out of date. We, we were out by a year, uh, with our customer count numbers. And so by bringing that up, up to date, we have adjusted the budgets and that did take place in twenty twenty-two.
Thank you. And then, um, the slide that showed the completion rates between twenty twenty and, and twenty twenty-one. And I'm, I've already begun to wrap my head around that a hundred percent isn't a, a reasonable goal, given that there's variables well out of all of our, uh, controls. But it makes me think, um, seeing as we, that the remaining percentage gen- generally gets picked up in the following year to finish the, the projects. If you, if you, if you follow, so, um, and, or maybe I'm wrong in, in that to be, to begin with. But my, my question is, I think as we see sort of this, um, big chunks of work carrying over into the following year, I'm just wondering it, I, I know we're early in this for reporting to understand this. I'm just worried about sort of the knock-on effect. So if we're seeing a, um, some of the, the slack or the remaining projects being completed at the following year, um, at some point, we need to scale back what we're, what we're asking for in the, in the budget or what we can, from a capacity standpoint. Or, and I guess that's combined with, say in twenty twenty or seventy-three percent of capital, just to, to pick up on that, did the balance of that get completed in twenty twenty-one? Or has some of that been bounced down? You know, I'm trying to understand where these pieces sit, I think is maybe the question. Could you provide some insight into that generally before?
Yes, I would, I'd be happy to. Um, as I look around, um, yes, I would be happy to, uh. With respect to, and I'm, and I'm going to approach this in two different ways because uh, what happens in capital is a little different than what happens in special operating. Okay, so I'll, I'll talk about special operating first. In special operating, we had two things transpire in twenty twenty. One, of course, I think we're all aware of was COVID. And then at the end of the year, we got a big bucket of dollars from the B C government called COVID Grant. So in twenty twenty-one, we had a five-point-four million dollar special operating budget, which is significantly higher, i.e. to the tune of one-point-four million of COVID dollars, higher than, uh, our budget would otherwise have been. So to say we didn't reach the goal that we would have is true. Um, we did a pretty, had a pretty good year. Yes, there were some delays. Most of the projects that were started in twenty twenty finished in twenty twenty-one. There were a few, not too many, one or two or three, I think, that were still ongoing. And, and we didn't manage to finish in twenty-one and, and were carried over into twenty-two. I think part of the issue that we saw in a special operating project is due to the timing of the COVID grant, we had already built our twenty twenty-one budget. And so we didn't have an opportunity to pivot and reduce that budget. Where that's different is that recognizing these trends and recognizing the completion percentages of where we were in twenty twenty-two, we have reduced, dramatically reduced, in fact, our starting point for special operating projects. So although we have a large carry forward dollar amount this year, it's being added to a low base. We recognize that we can't keep working from a high base and keep adding to it and expect to complete. We had to reduce the number of projects that we started with. So on the special operating side, we did that. And so we're starting from a lower base. So we have a large dollar amount, uh, associated with carry forward. Um, but we think that that will be manageable and we'll give it, be able to accomplish that in twenty twenty-two because we're starting from a lower base. So there's not as much conflict, there's not as much total dollars trying to be, uh, pushed out the door, so to speak. Um, with capitals a little different because some of these big ticket projects, we do our best to control the timing, but some of them, you know, are reliant on, on other levels of government for their uh, authorizations and approvals, and so that can delay timing. So a perfect example would be Yonex Seadike, where we're pretty much ready, we finished our design, but we needed to get approvals from, uh, both federal and provincial government. And then we needed to be able to commence work within a specified window of time to meet the fish window. So with those types of things, either you get there in time and can move the project forward or you don't. And in our instance, we didn't because we were waiting for other approvals which didn't arrive. So, um, so some of those, it's, I won't say luck of the dice, because that doesn't sound good, but, um, some, sometimes there are, there are constraints that we can't, that we, that are outside of our control. And they will impact our ability to complete projects. So I hope that that addresses some of this, and I see Ms. Boxer would like to add.
I see Ms. Boxer. I also see Mr. Wickham. So we'll go to Mr. Buck, or Ms. Boxer, sorry, uh, and then Mr. Wickham, if you have anything new to add.
Thank you, through the chair. Um, just to add to what Mr. Russell is saying, as well as we have that additional quarter because we're, we've approved in twenty twenty-one, the twenty twenty-two financial plan. So not only do we have a lower base on the special operating project, we also have a greater amount of time to finish our financial plan. So we have that additional quarter, so starting January first.
Thank you for that clarification. Mr. Wickham, did you have something you want to add to this point?
Uh, yes, just quickly, part of the Counselor French's, um, or, or sorry, um, Counselor Herford's question was about, uh, uh, whether we take this into account in our staff planning. And, and yes, by the time, uh, we get into fall and finalizing the budget, we're aware of those items that are carrying forward and we do plan that in our, in our overall um, budget asks and our plan for the next year. We do plan, um, we do plan for a slightly higher amount, um, we, because we can't spend what isn't in the budget. And so, um, we budget for everything going, uh, as we hope. And, uh, we do tend to have a, uh, a moderate amount of carry forward. And, and it's sort of a healthy and planned for thing in each year and that does not end up as a cumulative effect as the years go on. We do plan for that in our work plans for the year.
Thank you. Counselor, did you have another question?
Yeah, no, I appreciate those, um, um, responses. And I think, um, the percentage completion rate is, um, is, is sort of one way to speak about this and help it make sense for, for us around this table and also for the community. But I think that the dollar aspect of it, like where did we start? Like what pers, you know, did we start with, oh, we're trying to spend half as much because we knew we had, um, uh, a lot of work to do from the, from the previous year and, and, um, but I do like this, this measure and I just, um, I would like, I think maybe for another time it'd be interesting to under, to sort of understand what is a reasonable sort of target here. Um, because in a lot of things, a hundred percent would be what we'd be judged against. And I, and I don't, and I agree, I don't think that's reasonable here, but understanding, um, sort of on, on some sort of average, what, what to expect here so we can see these trends. Because if next year's, if, if, um, around this table, these numbers are lower completion rates even next year, then we need to understand, you know, um, why that is. But maybe it's one huge project that just didn't get approval and it could skew the whole thing. So I won't, um, belabor that point, but I just want to sort of, um, put that out there. So I suppose that's a, a comment or feedback rather than a question. Sorry, Chair.
That's all right. Go to Mary Elliott.
Mr. Russell, I'm just looking at the appendix documents. And I just, because this is a new way of reporting, I just want to make sure that I'm understanding each of the subtitle, subtotals. So if we look at the special appendix two, special operating project report, the first section to the first dark green line is single year projects completed. There are six of them. And then the next section are the projects that were tax-supported specifically that were completed. Is that correct?
Um, through the chair, I believe that the, I believe that the sort order is completed, tax-funded, completed, non-tax-funded. So I think the first section, first six projects, give or take, are tax-funded and then the rest are non-tax-funded. Then there's a subtotal of completed projects and then the same thing applies against, uh, projects which were not completed. So tax-funded projects not completed and then non-tax-funded projects not completed.
Okay, so if we have an eighty-seven percent completion rate on all of our single year Okay, I'm getting confused between headers and subtitles and then the header for the next section, I think. So the first heading says single year projects completed. But then the subtotal says single year projects completed, tax-supported. Is that the same thing?
Uh, what we've done is we've broken up the section into single projects completed. And we've highlighted the tax-funded versus non-tax-funded. So the eighty-seven percent applies that you're referring to is the percentage spend for all completed single projects. Um, and then there's a split between those that are funded from tax and those that are not. Uh, the same applies in the next section. And I think realistically, it's, it's more a case of, uh, number of tax-supported, not tax-supported, single projects that were not completed. But you'll note that the vast majority of the projects that were delayed uh, were not tax-supported. They were supported by other meat.
Right, we might need to work on our headings and a little bit.
Okay.
It, it, it does, doesn't.
It, it doesn't jump off the pages as nicely as it should. Okay, got it.
Uh, about what I'm looking at and how to figure it out and which percentages relate to which and why they don't add up to a hundred.
Might I say, through the chair, might I say they don't add to a hundred because we didn't spend all the money there, but you already know that, so.
Okay, and then, um, we had a really big savings in the bio solids hall budget and that confused me because I thought we had a pretty good handle on how much we were needing to ship and we bought a vehicle to do that and, but maybe that vehicle arrived partway through the year?
Uh, I will give this a go and Ms., Mr. Kenneshinko is already available. He might want to add to it. My understanding is two things. One, the vehicle arrived during the year. And two, our budget was based on, uh, the budget was based on total volumes and also increased rates vis a vis our existing service provider. So we kind of pushed the budget up on the anticipation that we might have to pay more to take it to, uh, to our normal service provider. And we were able to, uh, haul it there ourselves cheaper. It still costs a little more to dispose of, but that combination of lower volumes and uh, self hauling did save us more money than we had anticipated.
Yeah, I just saw Mr. Kenneshinko. Did you want to add anything to that?
Um, sure, through the chair, uh, Roland pretty well nailed it. Um, we, there's a lot in flux with bio solids right now. We've, um, added some technology at the plant. We've made some changes that has improved our de-watering and it, it reduces the amount of solids we're hauling away. Um, and we're doing some of that, uh, using our own equipment now, which is saved. But on the other hand, um, we're seeing significant over each other a little bit with some tight real estate on site and, uh, a piece of equipment that we need to, uh, go to a different, a different location. So it's, uh, we're expecting improvement through the future. Um, we're happy that we've saved some costs this year. That's just kind of a in-progress thing.
Thank you for that update. Go ahead, Mary Elliott.
So I heard your explanation, we're starting from a lower base for the special operating projects to Counselor Herford's question around, are we doing, trying to do too much? Because we've got fifty-seven projects that are carrying forward. Um, and then we have a whole new twenty twenty-two budget that's got projects in it. And I guess my question to, to our budget managers and our C A O and to finance staff is that, you know, a lot of the explanations on why things carried forward were staff capacity, uh, COVID, um, inflationary pressures and supply chain. And all those things remain true for twenty twenty-two. And so, um, but in our next conversation around the budget amendment for Q one, we're not seeing any changes despite what we learned from twenty twenty-one in terms of our overall budget. So have we accounted sufficiently for those, those pressures that we're seeing in this Q force, for Q four report, um, into our, our twenty twenty-two planning?
Uh, through the chair, I think Ms. Glenday and I were trying to get to the button first, or perhaps second, um. I think, I think that on the special operating project side, we kinda, I think we saw the writing on the wall this year and we're able to scale back our ass for next year. So I think that what we have is probably going to be doable. And I anticipate that there'll be a lot of pressure on managers to get these projects completed. I also believe as Ms. Glenn, as Ms., sorry, Boxer pointed out, that the additional three months of, of calendar year spending time will assist us because we'll be able to continue on with the existing projects that we had on the books and get continue on with the existing projects that we had on the books and get started sooner on our future projects. Um, with respect to the capital projects, for the most part, our capital projects don't slow down as a result of being carried forward. So the delays tend to be delays in getting the projects up and running, more so than delays while the projects are ongoing. So I think that from that perspective, there should be less direct impact. Um, you know, as an example, we spent pretty close to $9 million in Valley Cliff Fire Hall in 2021. So once the dollars started going out the door, we were spending at a fairly high clip. That's not going to slow down realistically until that project completes. So although we had to carry forward a number, you know, a couple million dollars into next year, that's because there was, there were some, a bit of a slow start in our and our contractor was somewhat hobbled by some of these supply chain issues that we talked about. But now that they've got going and they're up to speed, they're chugging along and spending, you know, at the rate we had anticipated, you know, 800 to a million dollars a month. So from that perspective, I think on the capital side, once the projects get going, I think that we'll be able to to manage the spending that we had anticipated. I think it's mostly around our ability to foresee delays that may be um brought towards us from third parties that we had not anticipated.
I'm sorry, C O Glenda, go ahead.
Thank you very much, Chair. Um, further to that, um, I did, as the C O, work with the general managers to ensure that the conversation was had with staff anticipating the budget amendment in Q1 that given supply chain issues, staff turnover issues that we've experienced in 2021, uh, inflation, um, that in fact, our budget is realistic and very frank, very uh honest conversations were had with managers and and they've assured us that that was part of their their planning. Um, that said, as mentioned in my introduction, we look forward to leveraging this data to further support our budget managers and our project managers in delivering and in better understanding um what it is our capability uh can do, notwithstanding unpredictable external events. Uh, but we look forward to continuing to support our budget managers to continue to deliver uh more than we have in terms of, you know, those, when you talk about reasonable targets on percent spend, uh, we do look forward to to increasing that.
Thank you, Ms. Boxer.
Yes, thank you through the chair. Um, I'd just like to add further to um what Ms. Glenda said. Um, the financial plan as well, we we had the conversation and we and certainly when we were talking with the budget managers um around the funding mechanism and what the impact of our financial plan would have on the community. Um, so just looking to that, the carry forward has very minimal impact from a tax funded perspective. It's very much on other funding sources. So the financial impacts of the carry forward is very minimal on on the community.
Thank you. Counsel, further questions? I have a few. Um. Mr. Russell, can you just uh repeat again the difference between the single year carry forward versus delayed to 2022?
Uh, I'll do my best. Um. When we say a single year projects being carried forward, what we're implying is the project has started and has not completed and therefore will be carried forward into 2022. When we're saying delayed, we're referring to the fact that a project has not started, has not commenced yet and therefore will start in 2022.
Thank you. That is helpful. All right, counsel, any further questions? If not, we do have a motion to entertain if somebody is willing to put that on the floor.
Can I ask one more question?
Yes, go ahead, Mary Elliott.
Um, it is March 22nd and the whole reason we pushed to have the budget approved by year end was so that we had that extra quarter. So did we in fact start tendering projects and working on projects this quarter? Has it made a difference?
Go ahead, Ms. Boxer.
Through the chair, I'm happy to say yes, yes, we have.
Is there any more detail behind that response?
Um, through the chair, I I don't think I can actually give a, well, and Mr. Um, Anthony Jeffrey is also on the line, so he could possibly give us the details, but we did start some of our projects. I just don't have the details of which ones were actually tendered in the first quarter.
I see, Mr. Morewood, would you like to speak to this at all, Mr. Morewood? We can't hear you though, although you are unmuted. We'll give you one more chance.
Can you hear me? Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Go ahead.
Uh, sorry about that. Um, through the chair, thanks for the question. I guess we have tendered um a number of projects. There's a, there's a number tendered right now. We have also completed um one of the carry forward projects from 2021. Um, the third Ave Water main project is now complete. Um, the the projects that we've tendered, um, off the top of my head, off the top of my head, um, is the paving program, the line painting program, the Pioneer Phase Two program, um, industrial um oil grit separator is on the cusp of going out this week. Um, and we have an active transportation um tender on the cusp of going out this week. Um, so there is, if it's, it's, I feel like we're in a really great position right now. Um, and like I said, we have completed some projects already. Thank you.
Thank you for that further clarity. Counsel, anybody willing to put a motion on the floor? It's just a motion to receive. Thank you, Mayor Elliott, seconded by Counselor French. Any further comments? Counselor Herford, then Counselor Peddengill.
Thank you. And I know a lot of the um, the discussion around this was around the percentages of complete uh or of of completed projects and budget spend and so on. And I just wanted to take it a a second to show that or to sort of highlight that um of our completed projects, various pieces of the completed projects came in well under budget, which I think is worth celebrating and I don't want to get lost in the percentage of budget not spent. So there's a lot of efficiencies there and I appreciate this extra level of uh of reporting and I'm really looking forward to everyone are really grasping the whole um, the power that this reporting can can bring to us to find those further efficiencies. So in a lot of ways, that um reduced amount of budget spend is a is a celebration because there's there's uh savings there of various uh sorts and of various amounts. So thank you for that and thank you for all the hard work on to try to make this make sense to all of us and it is a a lot of information to digest. So appreciate that. Thank you.
Counselor Peddengill.
Yeah, a a couple of things, uh, um, comments. The one, it's a minor one, but in one of our reports last year, there was a glossary of like accumulated surplus and all these terms, and I found it really helpful. And I think for a lot of people in the community, understanding these terms would be helpful. So I just, a request if we could get a a link in in these reports, uh, it just, I think, be really good. Um, and you know, just a Mr. Russell does an excellent job of explaining this and I feel a lot better after these presentations that I that understand it well. Um, but you know, some simple definitions, just to remind us for the puppet that are watching in terms of what a carry forward is and that kind of thing is it'd be wonderful. Um, I'm just thinking about the number of emergencies we've had and the pressures that puts not just on our E O C, but our um public works and so on responding. And so as we, you know, having these conversations about the level of carry forwards and are we planning too much work? That's also in the back of my mind. And so I just, um, I'm also thinking that for a lot of us dealing with all these stresses of the climate emergencies and pandemic and so on, we're taking on a lot of extra work and saying yes to things. And that's kind of our coping mechanism. And in the back of my mind, I do sort of wonder if that's what our staff is doing too. And so just making sure, I take it that we will be getting these reports and these reports will be watching closely now with the new system. But just making sure we're really paying attention to that people are being honest with themselves in terms of what sorts of work they're taking on so that we can make sure our budget actually reflects um what we can achieve. But uh appreciate the uh, the way this is communicated and the information in the presentation. So thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Anderson.
I am, I would also, I would like to compliment the clarity that I see in this reporting approach. But I'd like to make an observation that's a little bit more general about our reporting. And I'm going to use an example of a master plan, but I think that perhaps my my example could have been could have been any, maybe any other type of master plan. What I'm missing, and I'll use the example of Marine Action Strategy. There are about seven or eight special operating projects that are directly related, have their origins in a, let's call it a master plan, the Marine Action Strategy that was approved 2016. And that master plan was in fact a work plan. But what I'm missing in our reporting, and it's not a comment on your department to to representatives, but more general, is a a feeling of uh getting us a a reporting on the progress of a topic or a master plan. For example, it's not just the dollars and the amounts where we can make progress and we and I agree with Counselor Herford, we should observe where staff, what his staff have achieved in many different areas. But um, we are also interested to in clear descriptions and I frankly don't find all of the descriptions in the financial plan always clear. And we've noted this before. Some projects may have issues of scope or prioritization that we don't get to discuss as they pop up to us for the financial plan. Because it's, we need to see it in the bigger picture of a progress report on the master plan. How was it, how was that work plan to unfold? How do the elements relate to each other? Because some of them are quite complex and have many elements. So do the engineering master plans. But um, there are issues, for example, of governance, uh, marine governance, dredging strategy, channel navigation marketing, uh, a description that until recently wasn't all that clear at all. And apparently it refers to the access study, but it's called administration building. Impact study, maybe will come up later in conversation. What does that mean? In fact, that was relating to not environmental impacts, but economic development. So where I'm, what I'm lacking, and this is a general observation, is some means of year end reporting that give a coherent picture of a master plan or a theme like marine, like wastewater treatment, like active transportation, a different type of reporting perhaps specific to those plans. Rather than here, where those seven or eight Marine Action Strategy uh projects are found in four or five different parts of your schema, which I like, including climate action. But you can't fit the pieces together to see a picture and for us and council to have our to have our prompt, to be prompted to play our role in advising on scope or priority. Where we maybe miss those opportunities because we can't see the pick, the progress picture, the progress report. So maybe there's another type of progress report that's not this format, which is great, but one that can, that can give us better tracking on how we're doing on a theme and to see how the different project elements relate to each other, what should be prioritized? Is the scope right on this one? Should we even have a discussion at all? And sometimes we're not having a discussion on on our individual projects until, you know, we get a final report. So it's a general observation. There's another kind of uh year end report, I don't know what to call it, that uh will screen the information differently for a different type of picture as to making progress on master plans. Thank you. Hope I was clear.
Thank you, Counselor Anderson. I will go to Mayor Elliott. I do just want to comment on that in terms of we also receive uh reporting on the strategic plan, on the operational plan, and the master plans get moved through the financial plan and the budget. And the quarterly updates on the financial plan is our way of seeing how those various master plans are being moved forward. Um, so if there's something different than what you see in front of you that you think you need, I think you need to direct staff to bring that forward. Otherwise, the the work that is in the financial plan is how those master plans get moved forward. And that's our opportunity to provide feedback on how that work is progressing. If we're seeing it's not being progressed as per the status update, then to flag that with staff in these sorts of conversations um and ask why it's not progressing and how that might be reprioritized. But that would be my feedback. Mayor Elliott.
Thank you, Chair. You covered my comments. Um, and um, I do think uh you know, all through our council term, the arrival of the variance reports has been so um useful and helpful in terms of communicating with our community about where we're at, how we're doing. And uh each time they come forward, they're getting a little bit better. And so um, I really appreciate this transparency around separating out what carry forward means and that it has different categories and different impacts. So um, I think we can continue to polish that just to make it a little bit clearer. But uh, looking forward to uh being part of that conversation this year and and seeing um this develop uh even further. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, my comments on the motion, um, I agree that these quarterly variance reports are extremely helpful for council and for the community just to see where work is at. It's interesting to have this in advance of our next conversation around budget review. Um, so thank you for the timing on this. Um. I do think that there are some interesting conversations around projects completed to date and carryover. But I understand the rationale uh for staff bringing forward a separating out of what the single year projects are versus multi-year projects. And I think that's a helpful delineation in in theory. Um, I think I agree with the mayor that a little bit of clarity on the spreadsheet could be helpful. Um, but that's a work in progress and I appreciate where we're at. Otherwise, uh, I'll look forward to bring some of the information that's in this presentation forward to our next discussion. Um, and happy to hear that staff will continue to review the data that comes out of these sorts of reports for our information on planning and capacity planning uh going forward in future budgets. Any other comments from council? A call to question any opposed motion carries. Thank you. Uh, folks, we'll take a quick break. We'll come back at 10 after 4. Thank you. All right, welcome back, everybody. We are on our last item of the day. Uh, District of Skomish, 2022 to 2026, five year financial plan bylaw, 2021 amendment bylaw number 2904222. We have Mr. Russell is back and Ms. Boxer. I'll hand it over to you.
Thank you very much. Chair and council, welcome back. Page two. We're going to talk about the financial plan budget amendment or what we like to call the spring budget amendment, but hopefully the one and only and we'll keep going. So get my things going. So first off, to start, we wanted to just pop this little tidbit out there and state that last year we had a budget amendment and the result of the budget amendment was no change in tax revenue requirement. This year, the actual result of the budget amendment is a slight reduction in tax revenue requirement of approximately $30,000. So yay, we reduced the budget. Um, and I know, look, small victories are small victories. So we just wanted to point that out. There's a couple of things involved there, but overall, the actual ask is going down. So we're on to item two. This is a summary of the items within the budget amendment. This is the same chart that you will see in your report. And this is basically just to give you an idea of of what is there and and what we are, what is being covered. Okay, and I'm not going to spend a whole lot of time on this because we do speak to these various items and you will have opportunities to ask questions. So what we wanted to point out here in this slide and with respect to the environment, sorry, the amendment process in general is a number of things. First off, why do we have a budget? We have a budget amendment because if an item is not in an authorized financial plan, we do not, we that being administration does not have authority to spend the money. So we have to bring forward budget amendments where we know that the budget will not be sufficient to cover the anticipated costs. So the changes that we uh will allow or that we permit at this, because this is not a free for all, believe it or not. And it is not a wide open, let's redo the budget in the spring because And it is not a wide open, let's redo the budget in the spring because we didn't get to. There are some specific rules and regulations that we put around this and they are outlined there. So I'm going to go on to the next slide and I will highlight what these items are and actually show some examples. So for example, projects with timing changes. Well, projects with timing changes, an example of this is wastewater treatment plan upgrade for growth, where our engineering group has come to us and said, due to the delays that occurred in 2021, this project will not complete in 2022. And they wish to pull, push $4.4 million out. So you are asking, are we cognizant of the fact that we have projects and we have timing constraints and capacity constraints? And the answer would be yes, because we recognize that we're not going to get this project finished this year, even though that was our original plan. So the next item was projects with funding changes. Well, in this instance, we were looking at the water meter installation project. And we've made a management decision to not to finance this through debt because the water reserve is, is in a really good spot, lots of money. And there aren't any really large water capital projects that require reserve financing in the remainder of the fire, fire, excuse me, in the remainder of the financial plan. So it didn't really make sense for us to take on debt for this project when we had sufficient reserve financing available. The next one would be a question of scope change. And we go back to one of our favorite projects this year, the Monquin Road sewer upgrade. Well, we have a scope change because, try as we might, in 2021, the sewer did not get under the highway. So next year, in 2022, we're going to have another phase. And in that phase, we will push the sewer under the highway and it'll pop out on the other side. So that's a scope change that requires budget amendment because we needed to add this project. Lastly, our budget approvals for projects which require external funding or where the external funding has been made available and we wish to include a project. In this instance, Monquin Road failure, where due to the atmospheric river in November, we had a road failure and then the road failure. I actually, I think the road failure occurred earlier, but it was exacerbated by the atmospheric river in flooding, et cetera, in, in November. And so the upgrade of this road is now going to cost roughly three quarters of a million dollars. And we've been negotiating with disaster finance authority to provide funding assistance for this project. They've agreed, so now we've included the project in our capital plan. A second one would be, for example, the EAO, which is Environmental Assessment Office. Thank you, Ms. Boxer. Application support, which would be funded by LNG and Fortis. And we would need to include that in our budget so that we could, one, access the funding and two, spend the money. So those are the reasons that we have project amendments, or amendments to projects, I should say. And then the last one, the one that I'm sure you're all just rubbing your hands about is project carryforwards, where projects do not complete in one year and therefore need to continue into the following year. So we will go back and talk about our year-end categorization, where we talk about standard single-year, one-time projects, which are one year, supposed to start and finish in the year. Annual projects, multi-phased, and external, externally funded placeholder projects. So those are the categorizations that we have. Those are the categorizations that we showed you in the variance report. And those categorizations come up again in the budget amendment because what, what's occurring is that those projects that need to continue on from year to year have to now be included in the budget amendment as a carryforward project. So on to the next screen. Excuse me. Well, we will talk about the carryforward of capital projects. Got a little graphic here because we know that people like pictures. And, you know, even, even we accountants are getting better and better with technology. So now we can create pictures. So we wanted to point out a few things. Total carryforward amount is 3.30.7 million dollars. Of that, the single project component, which would be considered the true carryforwards, is 2.8 million, so a very small component. And of that 2.8 million dollar component, only $46,000 of the total $30 million of capital was tax funded. So what that's telling you is that when we are taxing our residents to support capital projects, we are doing that work in the year in which we receive the funding. This is not work that's being set aside or put off to future years. We, we get the money, we do the work. And so on the capital side, there's a very direct tie between project funding and project completion. So we want to point out that we've included some labels here, which identify how much the individual slices are. The vast, vast majority of capital projects are multi-phased. That makes sense. We have a lot of really big ticket projects that are going to take multiple years to do. Onyx Seadike, Firehalls, Firehole, Public Works, et cetera. Those projects that I named right there probably totaled better part of $40 million for those four or five projects. So, you know, if you don't get them all done, then you need to continue on the project. And so you're going to push it into the following year. That's why the bulk of capital is in the multi-phase. That is what one would anticipate and in fact, what one would hope. With respect to the carryforward of special operating projects, a little different here. We have a carryforward of approximately $1.3 million. 860,000 of that is our single-year projects. And of that, $190,000 are tax funded. So there's a much higher single project component and there is a much higher tax-funded component. Our rationale basically is that on the single, sorry, on a special operating project, the portions that are tax-funded tend to be single-year, single, single-year projects. So, you know, we had $525,000 in tax funding last year and we've spent 60% of it. And there's 20, 40% that has been carried forward to next year. And this is, again, we should keep in mind, these are projects that council deemed appropriate to put into the financial plan and to pay for through taxation. And we are simply completing those projects in 2022 as opposed to 2021 due to varying causes and reasons for delay. We are not adding additional taxes to complete these projects. The projects we have, they're all fully funded. We've received the money and we'll be, will be using the money we already have. As you can note, here, the largest single category are the single projects. Another significant category in this, excuse me, in the special operating projects are the externally funded projects. And that makes sense because we receive a lot of grants for special operating projects. With that, I think I have another slide where I talk about COVID. So we have a chart in your, in your report, I believe, attachment three, which outlines what our proposal was for this year for COVID spending, how much we have spent and how much is remaining to be spent in future years and how it is allocated. So this is a quick summary. We had $767,000, which was allocated in 2021 out of the $2.4 million total allocated in 2021 from the COVID grant. We have just under $800,000 left to be spent. We've reallocated those monies to similar initiatives in 2022. So we're doing the same type of thing. We're just, you know, some continue on, some don't. And then we've given you some highlights. So as an example, we've had revenue income shortfall, revenue, sorry, recreation revenue shortfall. We anticipate that that will continue into 2022. So we're going to use money to fund that, offset that. We've, we're spending money on IT infrastructure to support COVID and also project management. And those two items are going to continue on and will be funded from the COVID grant. We have some special operating projects, specifically emergency management and a public space design project, which were funded from the COVID grant, which were not undertaken in 2021, but will be undertaken in 2022. And we have some capital projects related to the IT networks, completion of the library internal space and additional parks projects, which will be undertaken in 2020, sorry, 2022. And last but not least, there's about $180,000 in COVID grant remaining. That's similar amount that was unallocated in 2021. So the amount that was kind of, we thought would be left over in 2022. Council has directed administration to consider allocating these dollars towards supportive mental health. And that is our intent. And I think that what we are hoping to get from council today is any additional or specific direction around how we might best implement that. Then I believe the last slide says questions and discussion. Back to you. Thank you very much.
Thank you for the presentation, Mr. Russell. I'll go to Mayor Elliott, then Counselor Herford.
Just on the last item around the COVID restart grant. In the staff report, it talks about our previous direction to look at mental health support. But then further on in that paragraph, it says Recreation Services is projected to face a revenue shortfall. And a second option is to leverage the grant to bridge that funding gap. But that slide seems to suggest we are using the grant to cover that. So are the Recreation Services shortfalls completely covered by what you just presented on that slide? Or is there more to be covered?
We have allocated $230,000 toward recreation revenue shortfalls. And we don't know what the recreation revenue shortfall will be because it occurs throughout the year. So we won't know what the true amount is until year end. What we're suggesting or, or presenting as an option is that if any of these other areas or projects are underspent, that we take any of that underspent money and use it to top up the, the recreation revenue shortfall, if it is required. Our goal is to attempt to use up the remainder of the BC COVID restart grant dollars in 2022. We think that, given where we are with the changes in public health orders, et cetera, excuse me, that is imperative on us to assist our, our residents and, and our community as best we can with respect to these dollars now, rather than continue to, to drag out this program.
Thank you. And then are we providing some funding to the chamber again for their grant writing support? Because that was very successful and I know they're interested in seeing that money again.
My apologies through the chair. My apologies, Mayor Elliott, I'm too quick on the button. The answer is yes. There is $40,000 in support to the grant writing program through the Chamber of Commerce that is included in the 2022 COVID amount.
Is there a reason it's 40 and not 50 like last year?
That was the number that our economic development manager provided to us as the appropriate value.
See Ms. Mulligan on the screen? Do you want to speak to that, Ms. Mulligan?
Yes, thank you. Through the chair. Can everybody hear me? Great. Yes, so $40,000 was requested by the chamber for execution of the, of the grant writing program this year.
Thank you for that clarification. Do you have any further questions, Mayor Elliott?
Uh, not at this time.
Great, thank you. I'll go to Counselor Herford.
Thank you. I was just looking through the, our, our previous presentation and I looked at, you know, there was 110,300 canceled projects. And as we went through the percentage of budget spend, there, just on the first page, there's nearly $300,000 to positive in the variance sign. And that stuff generally goes to accumulated surplus. But I'm thinking that the timing is different this year and we have opportunity now to, to perhaps reallocate some of that to level out the tax ask. And I'm just, that's where my mind goes nearly immediately. And I'm curious on staff's take on that, given that the timing now is, is closer rather than dealing with budget and year-end at the same time and lacking that clarity and then going to that accumulated surplus in subsequent years for it, rather than looking at it in a more immediate sense where these are projects we've completed or funds we've budgeted for. And should we, like, what's the appropriate time to sort of look at that? I just ran some quick numbers just quickly. And there's, there's completed projects that have budget left and that's going to go to accumulated surplus. So where, but I know that's handy when an emergency comes up, we've got accumulated funds to spend. So what's staff's thought on that? And is this as much of a change as it feels like it is to me? Whereas we now have our timing a little bit better and, and thus should we not take action with this new information that we have?
Through the, through the chair, if I may, if I may address that topic. We do think of this stuff too, which is good, because that's our job. In the 2022 operating budget, we're showing a, a, sorry, find the right term here. We're showing a reserve draw of $700,000 to support tax levy. So we've included some already from our existing operating surpluses that have occurred in historic years. So I guess where I'm at is, we think that the appropriate time for that is during the budget deliberation in the first place. And then any savings that might, shall I say, trickle in as the year goes on, resulted, resulting from completion of projects and savings there, that goes into the general reserve to replenish the general reserve so that we would then be able to use those funds to, to support future years' tax levies. So we've built in a $700,000 tax levy support into the 2022 budget. If you're asking, could we enhance that? Well, the answer is yes. And, and the source that you have identified would be an appropriate one. We're not suggesting otherwise. We're just saying, yeah, we, we've thought about it and we've included some already.
So, yeah, thank you for that. And I guess when we, when we're doing budget time, we're at maybe our Q3 variance, maybe, but even then, getting an understanding of what's coming. So having this, having this check-in point, I'm trying to understand whether best, maybe collectively, we should understand what best practice is. Is that to leave it and incorporate that into the next budget cycle? Or there's an opportunity that we've, a door that we've opened on the same day to, to, to look at that as a way to lessen the tax ask? Or are there pieces of this Q4 report that we're still waiting? Like, there's still some level of, of variability there that we should, we should wait on?
Through the chair. I think this is where they say, that's an excellent question, so I can pause for a moment. This is, I don't know if we have a best practice. I don't know if we have a best practice, so to speak, at this point, because we're transitioning to the use of accumulated surplus or reserve uh, general reserve to support the tax levy. This is the first year that we've done it. So we think that that's a prudent measure and we think that that's an appropriate use of these of these funds and that funding mechanism. But I don't know that we truly have a really good handle on best practice at this point. Uh, I think that we're working on some research papers that will be coming forward in the next little while. I'll look over at the CFO, try to remember what date that was supposed to be, um, which hopefully will outline what those best practices are. Um, so I think you can look at it from two perspectives. One would be if the money goes into surplus this year, that builds up the general reserve, then you could use the general reserve to support next year's tax levy. If you chose to support this year's tax levy, you could do so. And that's probably the reason that we prefer to have a slight gap in the timing between the Q four variance report and the budget amendment so that you have time to think about those things and we have time to adjust for it. Um, but, yeah, I mean, if you want to do it, you can do it and you let us know and we'll move on it.
I see Ms. Boxer would like to speak to this. Go ahead.
Yeah, thank you through the chair. Um, just to add to what Mr. Russell is saying, uh, we are bringing a general um reserve policy forward on April twenty second, and that's a body of work that's around quite a bit of um research with G O F A International as well as G O F A B C. Um, what that is telling us is that we still have a ways on our general reserve um in terms of of human resource contingency levels that we should have, legal contingency levels, we should have emergency um contingencies we should have as well. So as much as we, you know, can look to it in a short term to use some of it to reduce tax or to fund certain projects, we do have to keep in mind that that should be a valve that we open and close um annually in order to maintain an overall um recommended reserve in case of those those other things. Um, so you know, as Mr. Russell was also saying, we are currently have seven hundred thousand supporting our twenty twenty two to twenty twenty six financial plan. That seven hundred thousand is primarily coming from the twenty twenty. So it's a year gap. When we start to feel comfortable that, okay, you know, this is where our reserve is going to be. And again, that policy is coming forward. That's when we can utilize it. So really looking at twenty twenty one um to twenty twenty two is probably a little too short term. What we really want to look at is a stronger plan of going, okay, if we feel that our reserves at a whole level that we're comfortable with to reduce and and smooth taxes in, um, then we can use the twenty twenty, so leaving that year gap, if that makes sense.
I have Counselor Pedengill and myself, and then back to Mayor Elliott.
Yeah, thanks. A couple of things under projects for consideration. Um, I I thought I heard Portis say we might finally get the risk assessment from them and I'll remain a bit skeptical but hopeful. Um, but one of the projects for consideration is Hazard Risk Vulnerability Resilience Assessment Update. And that is a little more climate uh and emergency management legislation focused. But it also seems like that's where that assessment might get sort of analyzed. Or if we were to get that report from Forest, like, would we need this project for consideration to do that? Or would that be done sort of under the the wood fiber funding bucket or or somewhere else? So it sounded like we might get a risk assessment from Portis on their pipeline and so on. So for us to look at that, would that go under the Hazard Risk Vulnerability Resilience Assessment Update funding, which is for consideration? Would that under the nine hundred thousand uh grant or money from Wood Fiber under the E A O, there's another bucket there, or somewhere else for staff to look at that assessment if we actually, if it comes in like? I guess, is there a dependency on line eighty one, this Hazard Risk Vulnerability Resiliency Assessment Update? Do I need to worry about that money being there to look at any report that might come from Portis? Uh, line eighty one in projects for consideration.
Is that in attachment three, Counselor Pedengill?
Yes, attachment three.
So that those are unfunded projects at this point? They are not included in the budget?
Yeah, right, for considerations. So I'm I'm wondering, do I need to consider moving this forward or is it not relevant to that?
Is that clear, Mr. Basson?
Through the chair, no, that particular item wasn't intended to look at things like hazard and risk assessments result or vulnerability resulting from um standards of other people. This is geo hazard and community risk. So, and the funding from Fortis and Wood Fiber is either permit or or construction management plan related. I don't think it's going to be used to do an assessment on on C S A standards.
Okay, thanks. I'll I'll follow up on that. That's going to be one of my other questions because in the um i- in the uh talk about uh putting in the budget money from Wood Fiber, the project description does talk about permit analysis uh to full time staff, I think, for permitting and so on. The management response, though, brings in the idea of policing and et cetera. So I'm wanting to clarify what sort of things we're assuming we're going to put this money towards.
So I can, through the chair, I can respond to that. It's essentially three three streams of funding, one of which is for the R C M P. And that's additional policing resources um resulting through the construction period. It's not related to public order or dealing with demonstrations. That that would be separate. So one part of the funding, the large part of the funding is potentially for our C M P resources. The other one potentially is a planner and then an environmental technician position. So they would be reviewing construction management plans, D P A one, form and character D Ps, that sort of stuff.
Okay, just make a comment on that if I can. I, and I've raised it in other contexts. It's acute in Wood Fiber, I think, for me, but I I have a concern. Um, and I know when a a large project funds a planner or something, it takes the load off of other projects to some degree, and so it impacts them a bit less. But it still provides a unique opportunity to a large corporation, whether it's a fossil fuel company or just a large residential developer, that they can get a fast lane sort of through the system that just practically speaking, isn't available to anyone else. And so philosophically, I do have some discomfort with that. And I would love if we could come up with a mechanism where if you want your project to move faster, you you add a planner to the district or a planner to for a few years and and everyone's projects move forward and they're not dedicated to just your project. So it's more, you know, you want the system to move faster, you can fund the system, the system moves faster for everyone, kind of benefits everyone as opposed to it just benefits your project. And maybe that's a a bigger discussion. I don't think it's limited to our, to Wood Fiber, but it comes up in this context for me. Um, so I wanted to raise that. So I, I'm not sure if if that's a another discussion we have as a council at some point, but it's something that I think more broadly interests me. How do we not bias our system to the large developers? How can a small developer sort of have the system just as fair and available and workable for them? And and I feel like how we uh construct the sort of thing does bias the system towards the large players, which I'm not sure is is a benefit. So I'll just leave that as a comment for now. Um, the last question I had was the water fountain in Stan Clark Park, which is project for consideration again. Um, can someone remind me where we are on the the washrooms in Osam Pavilion Park?
Miss Arthur, go ahead.
Thank you. Through the chair, um, the washrooms in Stan Clark Park right now are being repaired and um we're hoping that they'll be open in April. Uh, the larger washroom project has been um added to Mr. Bragg's portfolio um for the rebuild of the uh facility out in Junction Park. So and they will have um washrooms as part of that facility.
Okay, and potable water, drinking water, is that part of the plan for that too, or it would just be washrooms?
I would make an assumption that we would put drinking water in there as well, that it's an assumption, but um, there's water in the building, the Arts Council building right now. So um, I think that the infrastructure is there and we would be able to reuse it and make it available to the public.
Okay, it'd be great to check on that. And if that's coming sort of in the the short order, then I won't worry about that project for consideration. But as we're looking at climate change and wanting to support people outside, we've got the new wonderful covered structures and so on. I I think we we want to make sure there is a way for people to be hydrated and have washrooms and so on. So I'll just leave that there for now. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, just a few quick questions. On the COVID restart grant, we're still projecting a fairly large uh revenue loss for recreation. And I'm just curious why that is, given that we're basically up at full capacity starting now uh, given health orders. And we never know what's going to happen in the fall, but um, do we have a sense of why that revenue projection is still so low?
Yes. Um, recreation tends to have three cycles, spring, summer, fall. Um, yeah, we're, we're hoping to be fully up to speed for the summer and the fall. But we definitely missed a chunk in the spring. Okay? So we we know that there, that the revenue is below budget already so far this year. Um, they were well down in prior years, like to the June of four hundred thousand dollars in twenty twenty one. So if they could recoup half of that in twenty twenty two, there would still be a shortfall of two hundred thousand dollars. So COVID has hit recreation so hard that w- we're really not sure how much rebound we can truly anticipate, because a lot of people are still um, you know, our discussions with with the recreation group, there's a lot of people that are, they're not comfortable with going back into the pool, so to speak, and literally and figuratively. And and so we're just not sure um the speed at which the COVID uh, you know, like with the changes in public health orders, the speed of which people will go back to recreation and start using the facilities again. So we're hoping that 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 shortfall in twenty twenty can be made up over two years. And that'd be great. And if we can do it sooner, so much the better.
Thank you for that. Um, and then just generally, my other question is, I think, a bit of a carry forward from our previous conversation around carry forwards. Um, of course, I appreciate the focus on, I want to focus in on the special project carry forward, which is the, to me, the larger portion. And I appreciate that capital projects are a little bit more fluid in nature. But um, of this single year's special projects, um, it's almost sixty, just over sixty five percent of those projects are being carried forward. And I guess I'm curious, again, I appreciate the focus on a small percentage of that is our tax supported projects. But from a staff capacity perspective, I still have a hard time wrapping my head around how that sixty six percent of projects are being brought forward, plus we're adding twenty twenty two projects on top. And so I have heard from staff that they've done a gut check here that we can do all of that work. But I just want to get a reassurance again that we can do all of that work realistically.
So this is the finance guy sticking his neck out for the rest of the management team? Yes, we're going to do it. Um, because that's what we're supposed to say. And also because, because I think our managers have looked at this and I I believe that they've been pushed by their G M's to to really ground truth how much work they can get done. And I think that we're um, we're seeing anecdotally through our procurement group, a lot of R F Ps going up early in the year, which bodes well towards us actually um jumping on top of this stuff and and getting it moving early. So, you know, yeah, we we think we're going to get it done. The other point that I would like to make is that um, in the few years that I've been here, this is budget number three or budget number four. Um, I've seen this kind of build up thing and and kind of have asked the same question you have internally within management is, are we biting off more than we can chew? Are we just stacking up work that we're not going to get to? And this is the first year that I can say uh management made a conscious decision and pushed projects out and did and dramatically reduced the value of the special operating projects being included in future budgets. So I think there is actually room because we didn't give ourselves a I think historically, we probably had a million dollars of additional projects within the, within the twenty twenty two budget to start with. And so any amount of carry forward was going to create a bit of a logjam. But we have one point five million dollars to start with. So um, the total amount of projects is going to be less than three million dollars in total. I I think that that's in the range that that we've shown we can complete or take a really good chunk out of.
Okay, thank you for that assurance. My other question is around um, uh, just clarifying, or there hasn't been, doesn't seem to be any revision of scope, particularly in the capital projects to cover costs, increasing costs of inflation. And I just want to make sure that our budget managers uh on that side of things have looked at the list of projects and the cost of materials going up, and we are still able to complete those projects within the allocated budget despite increased costs.
We do ask our managers to review their budgets annually through the budget cycle uh to and to make adjustments for cost inflations where they where they anticipate they will occur. Um, they don't get an opportunity to do that through the carry forward process. That's not really what this is about. So, um, you know, we anticipate that last summer, you figured out how much you needed to do to do the project, if it's a single year. And and you put it into the budget accordingly. If they're running into problems with uh how much it costs, then that's where management scale comes in, I guess. And you have to make tough decisions about um, whether you have to scale back or whether you have to delay or or what the other options are. Uh, the other point to make is that because we do the financial plan annually, and I'm thinking more here with respect to the capital projects, uh, there is an opportunity, if managers are seeing costs continue to escalate, there is an opportunity, especially for the multi-phase projects, for them to be reevaluated at the next financial plan cycle. So although you wouldn't see it at at budget amendment, we wouldn't anticipate changes related to to those costs at this time, you, we may see that uh in the summer with the financial plan cycle.
Thank you for that. I have Mayor Elliott and then Counselor Anderson.
Um, the other big change that could be coming our way later in the year is the quest, uh, request to change their legislation so they wouldn't have to pay taxes. And so does that get accommodated as an adjustment in the twenty twenty three budget? How how do we manage that? Because that's hundreds of thousands of dollars.
Um, through the chair, my understanding is that the the changes that Quest is that sound funny, but I'll say it best I can. The changes that Quest has requested um, are, have been put to the provincial government. Provincial government will make the final decision on that and then direct B C assessment to adjust the assessments accordingly. Uh, my understanding is that B C assessment has already set the assessment values for twenty twenty two. So any change at this stage, it's very likely that any change that Quest may have, if it if it is approved, would then adjust their assessed value in the next assessment cycle, which would apply in twenty twenty three. So I believe that we would know early enough in the process to be able to adjust our projected tax amounts to incorporate that.
I see the legislation is requesting it be retroactive to January one twenty twenty two.
Miss Boxer, would you like to speak to that?
Yes, thank you. Through the chair. Um, so if if they were successful, if Quest is successful in the twenty twenty one request, it will be coming out of the unappropriate accumulated surplus of the general reserve, and we have anticipated that. Um, and then future, so for twenty twenty three and beyond, we will use the general reserve to smooth it back in. Hopefully that answers your question.
That's helpful because my colleague was thinking about, you know, That's helpful, because my colleague was thinking about, you know, how much we could use from the general reserve. And there's potentially $700,000 coming out of that to address the shortfall. I would like to get some guidance from staff on if you want us to allocate all of that, 100, I think it was $184,000 in leftover COVID restart grants, or whether you need us to leave some wiggle room in case we do have another big COVID wave that requires us to shut down more in the fall and winter. So I'm just trying to, before I think about the direction I want to provide on that 184K, is do you want to suspend it all, or do you want a little bit in reserve?
Go ahead, Mr. Russell.
Through the chair, we think that you should dedicate the $180,000 that was originally available in 2022 to mental health, if that is your desire. We anticipate a couple of things will occur. I mean, all of these costs that we've included are budgets, they are projections, and there will be some flexibility in those numbers before we reach the final final this time next year. So we anticipate that there'll be a bit of wiggle room within those numbers, because they are estimates. So that's part one. Part two, with council's authorization and support, excuse me, obviously should have gotten my water popped up, we would like to direct any remaining funds that are unspent to year end this year against recreation if they are required. So, you know, our goal is to try to drain that pool by the end of 2022. So our recommendation is that you should allocate all of it. And keeping in mind that we have to find someone to provide this service, and someone to provide the service, and then get a contract and get the money out the door. So there's no guarantee that $182,000 is going to be spent, you know, looking to be split.
Are there any tax-funded special operating projects or capital projects in the 2222 budget that could use the $180,000?
Through the chair, there may be, but we would have to give that a bit of thought, and I'm not sure I can answer that for you right now, because you have to keep in mind that the COVID grant has some very specific restrictions. So we would have to assess what projects are out there, and whether or not they kind of fit under that umbrella. To be fair, I don't think we've thought about it right from that perspective at this point.
I'm just, I'm trying to balance some desire I hear at the table to see if we can adjust the tax acts, if we can. And also, I think we have to be careful about moving too far into the mental health space, since it's a provincial allocation. It's not to say the demand's out there, but I was thinking more that we would kind of do what we did last year and grant it through another body who already provides that kind of service, so that we weren't in charge. And I'm also really nervous about starting something that we can't continue to fund. And so that makes me a little bit nervous. I'd rather see it go to bolstering current programs than creating something new. So I'm wrestling with how to use that 184K. So my priority is that it was there for local governments to reduce the impacts of COVID. So if there's a project that's tax-funded that qualifies, I think, in my mind, that's the first place to use it. Then I think we consider whatever's left over to, whether we make it specifically for mental health, or simply just another grant through the community foundation around, you know, supporting people's recovery or community building through COVID. So I'm interested in what my colleagues have to say about that. I don't want to abandon the idea, but I also don't want to create a huge expectation that $180,000 will be there every year for mental health, which is not going to be the case, at least for Marbut.
Thank you for the comment. I saw CEO Glenn Day, and then I'll go to Counselor Anderson.
Thank you, Chair. Just around this topic, I'm wondering if you'd be amenable to a five-minute recess for me to circle around with staff. We did talk about this before the meeting, but I need to wrap my head around a couple of things. I know it's getting late, but five-minute caucus, would that be okay?
Yeah, I guess I'm just wondering if maybe you want to hear from other council members around that direction. Counselor Anderson, did you have a question?
Three clarified questions that could be addressed fairly briefly, or not specific to this topic.
Okay, please go ahead, Counselor Anderson, with your questions.
Thank you. Firstly, in the previous version of the projects for consideration projects, not currently in the 2022-26 financial plan, was a real estate and facilities master plan public engagement project proposal. And we discussed this briefly with Mr. Pageley earlier today. There was a joint staff presentation on October 25th, 28th outlining a desire for a preliminary or first phase of reaching out to stakeholders to better define scope for select projects. What is the status of that? I take it it has been removed from that list for consideration?
I see Mr. Pageley popped up. Do you want to answer that, Mr. Pageley?
Sure, I'll give it a attempt, and maybe Mr. Russell can add anything to that. The status of that particular engagement piece is currently just being part of a project plan we're putting together to roll out in the fall. And the idea is that at this point, we're looking at ensuring that the various phases of the projects are consistent with what the original plan was. So there's a number of scoping activities need to occur, prioritize re-agaging with the public. So we suspect that that would be a 2023, early 2023 activity.
Thank you. There we go. My second question, Chair, is really around for the communications department, perhaps, and it is the item under titled Communications Contracting Contingency. The description for contract support to assist in engagement communications activities to better reach citizens beyond the online dialogue where misinformation spreads quickly. My question is, is this contract support, is it consultant support that is strategic support? Is it new tools we're investing in via a consultant, or is it simply additional staff time support?
Ms. Arthurs, please go ahead.
Thank you for that question. You're 100% correct. It is consulting assistance. We've learned in the last little while that it's a brave new world out there. And, you know, it is a service level change that will be ongoing year over year. It's a communications contingency, although we have a plan for it for this year. We know that there's always additional engagement that we can do and additional tactics that we need to learn. So, you know, this service level change will allow for the contract support to assist in engagement as we get ourselves out of a digital world and back to in-person, face-to-face opportunities. And some of the opportunities that we've already want to get in front of some of the information or misinformation or complete lies that are out there right now, we want to be able to get out in the community face-to-face, go to the farmer's market, have some pop-ups, and really get in front of some of the information that's out there, so that when people read things, they say to themselves, gee, that's not what I heard, or that's not what I read, and that they're able to have an opportunity to talk to our staff about it. And we really want to get out there over the next few months.
Thank you. Go ahead, Counselor Anderson.
Thank you. My third question might be directed to Mr. Buckson or to Mr. Moorewood, if he may be online, and it concerns the Mamcom Road. It sounds like it's a success story in that a solution has been, a scenario for a solution has been figured out. And environmental management B C is coming on board, according to the report, on an eighty to twenty basis, so that we have some funding to allocate. So my question is, this road is the preferred for us. We don't want all these folks going through Geribaldi Highlands and University Heights. It's the preferred access for Geribaldi Park, for several crown land commercial tenures, including the Squamish Community Forest, but there are several others, and for a residential neighborhood within the SLRD, that is the Ring Creek subdivision. So my question is, is there some consideration here to be approaching these other agencies for assistance with this road issue, that this access road, yes, through private land, that's a complication. But is there a consideration? And a related question, just to illustrate the theme, we have a bridge in the Paradise Valley that years and years ago, B C Hydro used to help us out with, because it was critical access for their purposes for infrastructure. So in what cases should we be appealing to these other agencies for assistance in addressing these roads?
Go ahead, Mr. Moorewood.
Thank you for the question. Through the chair, you know, I would say we are asking the province for assistance. We, they are, we're applying to them for disaster financial assistance. They are offering to pay 80%, or that program pays 80% of the cost. So, you know, I would say the province actually will pay the lion's share. Whether we want to approach other questions, I might defer that to Mr. Buckson. Thank you.
Mr. Buckson, any thoughts on that?
I think Mr. Moorewood's correct. The province has already come to the table. To go to others is probably not a particularly good use of our time, particularly Flynn Row or anyone else like that is. I don't think it would be productive.
Are we suggesting this bigger picture of other crown land stakeholders, B C parks, when we, in discussions with emergency management B C?
I think no, because E M B C has funding programs for this. So I think going to another, whether it's parks or Flynn Row, and asking them to fund the same thing, they're probably going to say, we have a department that funds that. Please go talk to E M B C.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Buckson, Mr. Moorewood.
All right, council. Staff did ask for a five-minute recess. Maybe we'll give them that, and then we'll come back, hear what they have to say, and then we'll go into comments for this motion. We'll be back at... All right, everybody, we are back and refreshed on chocolate. So budget's going to go much better now. Well done. Am I going to pass it over to you, CAO? Thank you. Go ahead.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you for allowing us the five-minute recess so we could confer as a team on our recommendation. In terms of the balance of the COVID grant, to help councils further discussion and decision-making with the amendment, our recommendation is, at this point, to leave it as essentially a COVID contingency. We are hopeful that we're seeing the end of it, but we're not 100% sure. And further along in the year, when we're more certain about recreation revenues, COVID impacts, then we can come back to council or otherwise spend it appropriately on COVID-related expenses, could be mental health, could be youth. We did quickly go through the special projects that are tax-funded, and there really isn't anything that would qualify, unfortunately, in terms of the COVID grant. So that's our recommendation, but certainly open to council's final decision.
Thank you for that. All right, council, I'm going to go around the table to get comments on where we're at, so that we can consider how we might want to move this forward. I'm going to start to my right with Counselor Herford.
I should a question around that staff recommendation, so I'm going to go against the grain, because I usually turn questions into comments, and I'm going to go the other way around, turn my comments into question. If we left that COVID as a, or the COVID grant funding as sort of as described as a contingency fund, what would we need, what would need to be done to, in order to dip into that? Would we need to, when, if it proved to, that's what we needed to do? And do they expire at some point, even if we put them in a COVID contingency, and then we need to sort of make a quicker decision at some later date? And what is that later date? Maybe that's my sort of categories of questions around that.
Through the chair, because it is a contingent item within the COVID special project, the special project budget is approved, so we could then spend it on whatever item was deemed appropriate within the contingency category that met the criteria as outlined by the province for the grant. So given that it's a contingency, we're not just going to go spend it without telling you what we spent it on. But I think we could move pretty rapidly if we saw something, saw an area that needed additional funding, either directed by the administration or by council. I hope that answers your question.
Nearly. Would it require an amendment, or we have enough, a budget amendment of some sort, or just being in the contingency is what's required besides, you know, bringing it to committee of the whole for discussion or something at some point?
It, the $480,000 would be included as a contingency line within the project, the project's approved, so we have authorization to spend the money.
I guess, in general, I'm wrestling between the rate of inflation and our tax ask on a couple of fronts. One being, we had some supply, there's well-known supply chain challenges and cost escalation in some of these projects. And I'm a little concerned that particularly anything that we don't, or even the projects that we have scheduled to be done in 2022 are going to run up against the cost escalation that we're experiencing. The other side is whether we'd match the tax ask to the rate, you know, with the sort of inflation in mind without adding to it. So some sort of middle ground there. And I haven't, I'm not landed quite on a spot yet. So part of me wants to dip into reduce the tax, the tax ask to lessen the impact of the inflationary pressures we're seeing affecting our community already. And, but to what extent, I'm not sure at that point, at this point. So I'm kind of, I'm still on the fence in that, in that space. And so I guess that concludes adding the additional, adding additional projects, I guess, is where I am. So at least holding the line, if not reducing the spend through, reducing the ask, sorry, the tax ask, which trips me up just saying that, through whether that's dipping a little bit further into the accumulated surplus. But that's the general space that I'm, that I'm in without pulling, without looking at particular projects or anything like that. But that's kind of where I'm leaning at this point.
Thank you for the thoughts. And just some further context here, council, the recommendation for staff right now is to bring this back for three readings on April 5. And so I think part of what I'm trying to get a sense of is if folks are comfortable with that, or if they would like to see changes before that comes forward. So that's why I'm asking for comments. We'll go to Counselor Peddingill.
Yeah, I'm tentatively comfortable with things as proposed. I want to hear from the rest of my colleagues. I do think, you know, we held the tax line previously with a lot of COVID grant support. And, you know, we don't see a major increase because we have to play catch-up. I think it's reasonably modest. And, you know, we don't see a major increase because we have to play catch up. I think it's reasonably modest. Everything else is going on. I think in my mind is still taxes are how we take care of each other as a community. And. I think the market is such that this money is leaving our pockets one way or another. With inflation and so on, I think it'll go into private interests and developers and so on. And so I think a modest increase keeps that money in the community for services that make. That help maintain a quality of life and deal with the emergencies and so on that we're facing. And so. You know, I don't see wasteful spending. I see very prudent and thoughtful. Plans in our budgeting and so. I think I'm reasonably comfortable. You know, again, when I look across Canada, BC's tax rates are fairly low. And and so I think it's important that we, as a community, invest in our community. Thank you.
Counselor Anderson.
I understand the proposal to be to retain the COVID contingency. And I'm in support of that. Otherwise, and I think that. The world of COVID is our is so is our social fabric here and investment in programming for youth, seniors, recreational. And cultural that would fit into the provincial guidelines. That's where I'm at. If we're able to do strategic planning towards spaces, for example, for that programming, great. But I'm happy with with the current proposal. I, and yeah, I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Counselor French.
Thanks, Chair. I'm supportive of what staff is recommending. I'm not supportive of inventing new wheels and trying to. Find some new way to spend this money. With staffing challenges, the way that they are, that makes no sense. And I'm worried about new and different virus variants. That we haven't yet heard about. So I think that this idea of keeping it as a contingency is an excellent way. For us to potentially battle back against. Variants that could be on the way. And and just a thought on mental health, we often hear that phrase is linked to youth. And I think we need to expand that and think of seniors as well under that mental health banner. Our youth and our seniors, when it comes to mental health, have taken a big hit in the last two years. So. For sure, yes, youth and let's not forget our seniors. Thank you.
Just a clarification there, Counselor French. Your comment suggested that you were interested in keeping it as reserved and not spending it on. Something like mental health. And then your subsequent comments were about expanding it. From youth to seniors and mental health. So I'm confused on where you were going.
Okay, yeah. Definitely would like to see the money go into contingents. And then beyond that, when we get to the point where we're ready to start spending, that's where my thoughts are.
Thank you for that clarity. And any comments on the. Budget amendment in general and whether you're ready for this to come back for first three readings?
Comfortable with it coming back for first three readings and I share Mr. Russell's enthusiasm for the $30,000 reduction in taxation.
Mayor Elliott.
Thank you very much, Chair. I think it's smart at this time to leave the contingency, but I think I would actually put a motion forward to. Discuss with our. Community partners, the Arts Council and the. Community Foundation, sorry, it's been a long day. To talk about whether some of that funds, we would increase their allotment. In the next go around from these funds to focus on community building. And bringing people together. And so I think that's an important conversation to have and. You know, we don't, we don't have to make that commitment, but I think we should have the conversation. Ms. Dicker could have that conversation with our partners and just explore that idea of if we had some money left over from this contingency, so we don't get another big wave. How would you use it to the grant project to encourage? That community connection again, bringing people out of their homes, getting people connected again. You know, reducing the polarization that we've seen in some aspects of the community and. And and I think our community partners could be really useful in that effect. So. So that's, that's a conversation I'd rather have this year rather than waiting to see if there's any leftover. I, while I'm enthusiastic about a $30,000 tax decrease, I'm even more enthusiastic about it being higher. And while I understand that we're going to get a report in April about our general reserve and how to build it up. I think that that should be done really thoughtfully and purposefully. And what I'm seeing from staff's report is that we had $68,000. From special operating projects that was tax funded, that was saved. In our special operating projects budget. And I think, given the inflationary pressures our communities under. Given some of the stresses that are still there because of COVID, that 68,000 should come into this year to smooth our tax ask. We taxed for it last year. We managed to save that money and I think we should return it back to the taxpayer this year. And I think that would be a good use of funds and then it would make our tax decrease almost $100,000. So. So I, well, the chair hasn't spoken, so I just wanted to put that on the floor.
Thank you for the comments. I. Was a little bit cautious about the suggestion to move the COVID recovery money into contingency. Mostly because I do appreciate that we don't really know what's coming. There may be. Further disruptions with further variants, but I also think we've learned a lot in terms of how we manage and. There are some costs that will come to that, but I also think we've, we've invested a lot already in terms of. How we move things to hybrid. And so I'm, I'm not sure those costs will be as substantial and I'd rather see that money spent. To address. The ongoing impacts of COVID in our community. I, I agree that I don't think we necessarily want all that money to go to mental health, but I appreciate the suggestion of how. Do we move that money through our community partners to help bring folks together again? As people kind of come out of their homes and come out of. Come out of isolation. In terms of where we're at with the budget in total, I have been struggling with. The previous report around the level of projects that have been carried forward. From 2021 into 22 with. Trying to reconcile the risk of inflation, which is. Over 5% now. And I'm not sure that our capital, that our capital project budgeting has accounted for that. And so I do have. I am trying to wrestle with how we actually. Address that, that carry forward. And I think potentially the mayor's suggestion of of taking that $68,000 in savings. And applying that directly to smooth this year's budget ask will be one step in that direction. And I think that would make me a little bit more comfortable than just moving it as first three readings as is. So with that, Mayor, do you have a suggested motion to bring forward?
No, let me ask a question. When our budget managers do budgeting, are they given an inflation rate? Or or do they guess based on their current projects?
They're given an inflation rate. They're also asked to. Use inflation rates that are specific to. The types of projects they're working on and or the industries that they're dealing with. So for example. Mr. Bragg, who's building buildings, is going to refer to. BC Construction Cost Index rather than just a generic BC. Inflation rate, for example. So we encourage them to use specific sources. That are, that are relevant to the type of work that they're doing. And or to default towards a more generic inflation for general costs.
Thank you. Is that an okay, you're going to try something or would you like me to craft something?
I guess I want to confirm that I generally heard support for. Reallocating the $68,000 in savings from the special operating projects budget to reducing the tax ask. I think I heard general support for engaging. With our community partners. But I wasn't clear on, Councilor Stone, specifically to your comments, whether you wanted to allocate some of the 180,000. Immediately or after the conversation or it'll be sitting in contingency. So I think we can use it for that. Whatever we decide after the fact. I feel like we have that flexibility, so I don't want to rush this conversation. So that's why I was just trying to figure out the wording on that piece. Is it to engage and bring back to council some ideas?
That's what I would suggest. I don't want necessarily put a number on the table right now because I want to leave that conversation open to see what the ideas are. But I would rather see that money spent sooner rather than later.
But I also want to respect the fact that the majority of council felt it was really important to have a contingency sitting there. So. So that council directs staff to bring back. The budget amendment. With the following changes, that we use $68,000 in savings from special operating projects in 2021 to reduce the tax ask. That staff preserve the hundred and, is it 180, Mr. Russell? Hundred and eighty in COVID restart grant funding. As a contingency. And that staff engage our community partners. With regard to using some of that contingency to for grant funding in the next go around. For community building and mental health and bring back those ideas for council's consideration.
Well done. Thank you for putting that together. I believe it's 182,000. That would be my only change if that's a friendly amendment.
Whatever the number is, 182, 84, 80, somewhere in there.
Seconded by Councilor Herford. Any further comments, council? Go ahead, Mayor Elliott.
So I think this is the first time we've done a Q1 budget amendment because this is the first time we actually got our budget done before. The end of the fiscal or last fiscal year. And and that's really important. And we know that's strategic. And we've heard today that that's allowed some of our annual project RFPs to go out. Right away, giving us four quarters to complete the work. So all that is helpful. We have new systems that are going to be tracking, carry forward better and and understanding that. And increasing that transparency to our community. But there are still pressures on the community from COVID, from inflation. And so I think it is valid to take money we saved. To help reduce the task tax ask this year. And and I think it's prudent to hold that contingency because we can't predict the future and. And I think there's a feeling quite generally that that maybe the worst of COVID is behind us, but. As some of my colleagues have said, we just don't know that yet. And so I'd rather. Be, you know, we're getting most of the way through. Through this year and knowing that this council or the next council has potentially some money to continue to allocate to offset. To offset COVID. So I'm happy where we've landed.
Any other comments, council? Go ahead, Councilor Herford.
Thank you. I'm supportive of this of this direction on on all fronts. I think. We all, we all hope that we're done with COVID with COVID as we sit around our, our committee, the whole table here that we haven't been able to do for the last couple of years. But but we don't know. So I do think it's important to have it there to see what needs do arise and. And if it is done after some period of time, we can find a good way to sort of flow that out into the community. I appreciate the. The opportunity to. Sort of check in at this point. And it's interesting to sort of figure out what we want to do with that opportunity. And I think that where we landed here today and with this with this motion is a good. Is a good, is a good place and allowed us to check in once the. Sort of the dust started to settle with the the final factors of our of our budgeting. So I really enjoyed the overall. Budget process happening earlier. And I know it was a big push to make that happen. And. I hope that our community starts to really reap the benefits of of that. This year, as we've already sort of got to work on some bigger projects. So thank you for all the work on this. I'll be happy to support the motion at this point.
Counselor French.
Thanks, Chair. Speaking in support of the motion, I think that what we've gone through today highlights the. Early budget process win that we've experienced. This move has proven to be successful right out of the gate, which makes me very happy. And also, the fact that our taxation. Ask reduction is now in the neighborhood of $100,000. Is great news for people that are on fixed incomes, low income residents and seniors. Thank you.
Counselor Peddingill.
Yeah, thanks. I'll be supporting this. You know, notwithstanding my earlier comments, I think. If we found savings in the last year that we didn't have a plan to spend, I think that's reasonable to. Put that into a tax savings. In general, I was speaking to when we have designated projects for the benefit of the community. I didn't want to start pulling those out now. And we haven't done that. So I'm happy there. And I still stand by too that. Need to think carefully about providing a special fast lane through our processes for. Large projects, whether it's a fossil fuel project, one or anything else, really. I think that's a bit of a concern to think about. When these sorts of large funding sources come in. But the motion on the table makes sense. Thank you.
I too will be supporting the motion. I think doing the work, the hard work to get the budget pulled forward to Q4 has been really valuable. I think I see the potential risk in in the. The pull to want to reopen the budget when you do the Q1 review. And I think, thank you for keeping us honed in and not doing that and not going back through it. But I do think it's interesting timing to get at the same time as as. The Q4 variance report in terms of kind of understanding where our spending has gone in the previous year. And how we can kind of smooth that taxation this year. I look forward to that deeper dive that's coming in April around how we build that general reserve. I think it's new for the district. And so I think it. There's some learning both in council and I think that staff can bring forward. For us to better understand how we build that, how we use it. I think it's really important that it's there. And that we just better understand what that looks like in the longer term process. So I feel comfortable this year taking that $68,000 in savings and applying it. As we learn more about how that general reserve will get built going forward. And in my previous comments about the COVID grant. I agree that there's still some unknowns. So happy to see it in contingency, but also happy to see those conversations start. To take place around how we can hopefully move some of that money to support our community. To come together after a really challenging time. So look forward to seeing that come back. Not seeing any further hands, I will call to question any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. And with that, I'll entertain a motion to terminate moved by Mayor Elliott, seconded by Councilor Herford. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you so much to our staff for supporting us for a long day and to council for your deliberations.